We'll bring the budget meeting to order. Everybody have a chance to read the letter from Betty and Candy? Any comments?
In line of comments, I think Elizabeth has done an excellent job. She's out for the past number of years and she's surely going to be missed. She not only does that, but she serves as the Secretary of Trade and Security and Commerce for the County Association and the binding zoning and numerous other duties that she has. I don't know if Candy's going to want to take all of her responsibilities, but we sure hope so. Good day. I'd like to thank you very much for all the work. I don't think that we should make a motion at this time. Are you ready for the regular meeting or what do you think? Yeah, I think it should be one of the public meetings.
Yeah, both for the rest of the...
The elections were six or five?
It was, um, 2002 was my first year, I think. So, I was appointed in September of 2007.
So, you want at least five elections.
At least, I think. For sure. I don't keep track of that.
Well, with that said, I mean, that shows that people around the county have radio faith in re-electing a county officer.
I really enjoyed it.
He was an excellent guy.
It was a hard decision.
It's always hard.
Yes.
Yeah. I'll live with the ladies who launched here, which I quit after coming here. It's difficult. Yeah, it's hard just to put them to step away. Raptors will leave your way.
Thank you.
We'll lean into my budget, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. If you have any questions, it's on page four.
And the reason I increased in this line is registration and dues is because with being the auditor position, a person has to get more classes. So, and some of them she can take out of mind, some of them she'll have to travel, but so. And otherwise, it's pretty much just the pay scale as was recommended and travel expenses is the same. Service contracts is part of our contract with the county recorder for document control. And so, and all the supplies went down a little bit because our computers are pretty much up to date right now. So, we have to outlay just in case there's an emergency or computer virus crash or something, but so.
So, this would be your salary for '17 if you were staying?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure of that. Well, it's a good thing you got one person hired because it looks like we'll hire two.
So, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. So, we'll move on to the recorders on page seven.
Yes. My budget, the salaries were what was recommended. The travel expense, I've increased quite a bit from $1,000 to $500 because the Recorder's Association has assigned me to the legislative committee and it's going to be a legislative year, so there could be several trips to Bismarck. Reporters are considering a bill which, for reporter fees, to change the fee schedule a little bit. That hasn't, we haven't decided to go forward with it yet, but if we did, then there's definitely going to be trips to Bismarck. So, I have the travel budget for that. Service agreements, I actually lowered by $5000 because that's our software, which we can use document preservation point support. So, I'm just going to balance it out with that. Office supplies was lowered by $500 because they're getting printer ink and things like that can all be taken out of document preservation because it's part of the system. So, we can save that money there. So, the difference between my travel and most providers was washed. So, really the only increase is the salaries. And then my other, the end of my budget, I set at, it was at $30,000. I set it at $40,000. The balance of the account right now is at $38,600. We do have another refund expected to be coming in the mail any time. I would expect it now. That's usually around $3,000. So, that account will be up at that $40,000 level before 2017. And really, that's just an in and out. They only spend what's in there. So, you know, I wouldn't go over budget if the money wasn't there. So, and that's everything.
Anybody got any questions for Katie?
Are you looking at more preservation projects once you get them lined up?
I'm waiting for the images to come back on the one and then I will inventory my next group of miscellaneous books and get a quote and see what it's going to be. Yep. I'm going to keep moving forward. Said it depends on what the quote is. If we have to wait and let the account build, we'll do that. Otherwise, if the money is there, we'll move forward with another project.
Okay. Any other question? We'll move on to Lisa.
Okay, it's fine. Okay. Salaries are what was recommended. I would like to still have Beth come in on a part-time clerk. Travel expense went up because I'd like to go to Watford City. That's where I'm in. And everything else is the same.
Anybody got questions for Lisa?
And you have to go ahead and do that. Superintendent of Schools, it's pretty much the same. That miscellaneous, we still have an agreement, our agreement, joint agreement with the school. They do this felony and the no. So, they get their $1,050. And I suppose in the coming years, we probably can expect some schools closing. Haven't heard anything. You know, kids are, I think there's only probably going to be 60 in Edmore again. I don't know what's our father. Anybody got an idea? Stuff from the copies?
Be confident we'll see it for a while, right?
I think it might be somewhere in the file, but just so everyone knows, we did pass a motion back when we reduced this budget that we would employ somebody to help when there was an annexation or a school closing because it takes a lot of legal work and it takes a lot of podager work and so on. We lowered the budget because it was just a carryover every year.
Exactly, yeah.
And then we just went on a shoestring budget here, so to speak, with Lisa keeping up with those old activities.
Yeah, and looking up some old records and we had a few of them this year. Everything is online now. All their MIS forms are all online. I don't keep any of those hard copies in the file. I know they kind of frown at that, but I can't see when it's all online. You can go right to that. Yeah, and get it.
And the online stuff is all backed up, so there's no chance?
Exactly. So, we go on DBI and they okay me, every school okay's me to go online.
Okay.
To look it up.
Okay.
So, if somebody has a question, that's what we do.
So, there shouldn't be some direction in file as to how the past commissioners wanted to deal with it when that happened?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a matter, we have to keep in contact with the schools so we have a heads up. We know what's going to happen so we can push forward. We think it's going down.
Any questions? Got any questions?
Nope.
Going right on. I agree. When Prairie School closed, it was very interesting to sit on that because I, already had me come in when that closed. That was very interesting. I think Lisa, you were involved also.
Yeah.
And it was how they divided up the school district and all that. It was, and then the judge is also involved, so.
Takes a lot of public hearings and things like that because some people have just got their taxes go to prayer or to Devil's Lake and some to the Colored Room.
People have a choice.
Yes. Because we have some kids who have to start with it right now. Because you see the start with it classes through the mornings. Yep, so.
They give people a choice of where their land is going to go.
Yeah, if it was...
As long as it was contingent to the district of touching land from the other district.
Yeah. You can get a code of the Devil's Lake.
Maybe, yeah. Continue to touch. What about your share of money?
I don't remember any arguments.
I don't either.
It's all public hearings, it's like, there's that by law.
And it's kind of nice that the recorder stays now instead of five years because once they get annexed into a different school district, all that back taxes, you got to make sure that it doesn't get sent to Prairie or wherever the school district is all, you have to split it up.
You're a...
You're a...
Just a big bro.
Fine.
I'm way early.
I know.
I'm a sharp minded.
The school district is selling school. No, I know that. I know that trucker used to drive by every day.
It's a Prairie school.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, something has to happen.
$3,200 bucks.
Yeah. While I was at the auction center.
You were there?
Yeah. I remember going, I could buy $3,200 bucks. I was in 12.
You might have been.
It'd be a heck of a place to look. It was hanging out.
There was one year, it was one year when Prairie North Dakota had the biggest coasts in the county, the smallest coasts in the county, and the holiest coasts in the county because they also had somebody living in the church. And they had one gentleman living in Isles. Had this kind of this school. A little bit in my hometown.
I just remember they said this whole thing at $3,200 bucks, that's pretty cheap. You'd get for the G.I.S., you'd, there are no guys who'd get cheap.
Do you remember?
$5,000?
I honestly don't.
Yeah?
Well, I know Myron Pearson tore it down because Tim helped him. So, I know that, I know that that's the board now.
I actually don't.
I think he, I think Tim tore it down and his share was the wood to build the back deck on the horse and pen. So, that's where it came from.
Okay. Bill, if you're ready, we'll take you next.
Sure.
Okay? And that goes to page 42, please.
Is everybody looking at it? If you look at the first two numbers for Brenda and I, those are always predetermined by the state at NDSU. And then, of course, you guys can share it out. This year, I got a little bit bigger bump in pay than Brenda because I, they offered a lead and learn incentive, which if you met the criteria for that, that was the $3,000 bump in pay and thus the bigger difference there, not, not be percentage wise. This is just something that's separate. Okay? Cindy's salary, of course, is based on what was given to us by the county on the step process. Fixed charges is the number that Betty, Elizabeth, I'm sorry, had given us. And all the other numbers have been the same since I came here, except travel. And travel, we increased that to this number about, I can't remember, three or four years ago. I don't recall for sure, but the miscellaneous and those other charges have always been the same. There's, and we, I don't know, sometimes we turn back a little bit on the miscellaneous stuff, but not very often. But they're not very large. So, like most budgets, our biggest increase is salaries and benefits. Questions? Comments?
It was nice to meet the new director last week.
Yeah, I wasn't here. Her name is Kim Rolson. I think I pronounced it last week right.
Yes.
I'm co-coordinator for State, Sustainable Labor Culture Research and Education in the State. And I, she knew that I was going to be gone that day, so, yep. We'll bring her in one day for a commission meeting and everybody can meet her. Any questions on that? What I have, mine would seemingly be pretty easy, seemingly. Although you made one more comment, we need to figure out how to turn that water off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tapers.
$175 up north.
Yep.
Or up in Edmore.
Last night.
You got it north of Edmore.
Good God.
If you look at the telecast this morning, and of course, it's an estimate based on radar, about one to two inches in a very small portion around the, a big portion of southwestern Cavalier.
Wait, I said $175.
Yep.
They both got my stuff at once yesterday. Have you a backhoe out there?
I already did.
Oh, my God. Open up the country today and better somewhere else.
Just doesn't want to quit. You know, one just went through down near Port, or where we Port town just now.
Yep. Being told not about 10 minutes.
Yeah. Well, I heard a good one this today. There was somebody up by my mountain that's got several hundred acres of peas. They got six new combines out there and two carts. They had the average between 80 and 90 acres a day, between being tough and being stuck there. Yeah, it's disheartening, to say the least. Any questions of any sort? Okay. Thank you all.
We're supposed to stay on fast here so that anybody that wants to come in and proposals can hear them or will we? Skip, call anybody or talk to me through it?
Hi, I'm Carter Stevens, ready. If you can help, you can.
Okay.
This is how we're scheduled, so.
Hey, Steve?
I don't care.
Could you come in now? Are you ready?
I'm coming. Don't worry.
He was born early.
If he wants to stay late, he may not buy.
Just be ahead of schedule. We call Kristen up, she doesn't have to say anything else. And Steve is on page eight, there are big news.
Yes, with the IT budget, went with time is recommendation for salary and lowered some of the travel supplies and miscellaneous, but increased the support a little and the maintenance. I guess they couldn't, went down too.
Hey, Kristen, can you come up for a minute of your living? This is where I called.
I guess, for the IT budget, a lot of, it's going to come out this year, I guess. I think the next month or so, I should be looking into getting a new server. And a lot will come out this year, so, but there might be some recurring costs coming next year for backup type of stuff. But I think I can hit most of it funded this year with what's left in the budget.
And that would be under equipment?
Well, it'll probably come from multiple lines and the G.I.S. budget and social services and the recorder's office.
Would put everywhere?
Yeah.
That's what I was going to ask. I mean, you have an equipment budget of a certain dollar figure and then some of the departments have embedded equipment budgets for computers and stuff. So, your equipment budget is specifically for like server and miscellaneous things that aren't necessarily specific to one department, basically?
Things are a share of it.
Okay.
So, with the server, Steve, can Katie take some of that out of the network fund because of document?
Yeah. Said she could do that.
Okay.
Well, and then Rhonda explained to us last night that a large share of the storage on the server comes from the social services. And that was why they thought they could put in, I think they said, did you put $10,000 in the budget for it? That that would work. The one thing they did talk about was off-site storage. And I'm hoping that that could be incorporated into putting new server in.
Yeah, and that's...
Because right now, you're backing it up to a hard drive on a data basis, is that correct?
Yeah, but it's located in the courthouse.
Right.
And occasional take onto another hard drive that's portable and able to be taken out, but that's only...
So, contracted to the company to do cloud backup or something of that nature?
Yeah.
Outside server.
Is that what would work? Would that work well for social services as well? We need off, yes. Steve and Christine and I have had lots of conversation about it. We need off-site storage. We would be, it would be hurtful to, we're going to put, go paperless. We have two, Steve knows this too, I'll let you explain, but if we, with the onsite storage, if something happened at the courthouse, it blew up, we'd be, we wouldn't have any records. And so, that's a concern for, that has been a concern for us for a long time because of it's backed up physically right here in the building and not off-site, on a cloud or in a vault or whatever you pay for, whatever the name of it is, so. But you and Katie and Rhonda and Christine could work together to make that happen? That's my understanding in that with, with the budget as it sits and then is proposed, that would work?
Yeah, I think so, but...
Is that what we're, is that what I'm getting from this? Okay.
And, well, I'll probably be coming to you with the options because the cloud backup is not cheap, I guess.
How about vault backup? Is that cheap or...
Well, there's, if we're trying to do it ourselves, basically, we're maybe put something over the city offices or down at the LEC. Because they're on the same network, they could, things could be backed up down there. But if that works out...
Would that be realistic for social services?
If backed down, then...
Well, I don't know that that would be ideal for us, we talked about, but we'll negotiate that.
But look down at options.
Yeah, because if you have a physical server sitting somewhere, there's probably, you know, that's not in a building we're controlling, there's security issues and things of that nature, especially with information that social services is dealing with, a lot of private information that we have to control. So, you almost have to contract with a company that deals in this and knows exactly what they're doing. So, you don't compromise information. It's going to be bad.
Anybody have any questions for Steve on the budget for G.I.S. and E.T.?
Yeah, the G.I.S. budget is, yes, less than it was before last year.
Yeah, down by, down by $8,000.
That's basically, I guess, I had been anticipating things, well, that came up
a few years ago where we got a new aerial photo taken that was basically just done out of the blue type thing where we were able to have money there to purchase it, but I guess it hasn't happened for the last couple of years, so it took most of the extra out there.
Well, thank you. They're both, it's pretty nice. They're both down, one not very much, but we'll take it.
It really would be nice to be able to take it down to an opportunity if that aerial photo ever did come up again. So, how would you plan on working with that? And Steve, would you just come in and ask the commission to find the money for it?
Yeah, that's probably what would happen. It's, yeah, hard to plan a year out too where it would...
We appreciate you chopping all that out and saving, saving some money, but hopefully, you know, when it does come down to be able to take advantage of a situation like that that we can, we can find the money to do it because that picture that you've got now is becoming outdated, so.
Yeah. Always, it's old as soon as you take it.
Yep. What is it, three or four years old now?
Yeah, it was 2013.
So, but you could take that out of, possibly take that out of public resupply, I mean, that's left this year, right?
Yeah, there's some...
I mean, there's $16,000 left in there. So...
Yeah, but I guess, I haven't heard of anything.
If it happens this year still.
Right.
If not, let's roll the general fund.
I don't think the state's going to get involved in too many extracurricular pictures either. It'll be a while soon. Unless the state water commission is planning on doing it or some of the people are planning on putting it already in the budget, but they don't, who would do it? But keep your eyes open. It'd be nice to take advantage of it if we could.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I ask you? And, and we'll move to Auntalani, I bet she misses it less than I believe this year. Page six, you're up, Lonnie.
Well, I guess just some of the highlights. I'm proposing to move Maran from part-time to full-time. It would require some, I didn't put it in my budget as far as renovating the office a little bit. Probably need a desk chair, another computer. I did put that into an capital outlay. And it's just, juvenile court is getting more and more complex. There's, there's a lot of litigation to it. There's a lot more follow-up, we have a lot more review hearings than it seems that we used to. She takes a pretty active role working with Rhonda's staff and social workers and taking calls and so forth. And it would be nice to have her in the office as opposed to working out of the home. As far as other staff, I'm proposing to add a second paralegal. As it is Connie is, we, she's, she could have retired a year ago, but she hasn't. As time goes by, technology is our friend and our enemy when it comes to productivity. The use of a lot, a computer makes us a lot more efficient in getting complaints done and so forth. But also, for example, with the court automation, it's a lot more labor intensive to do e-filing. In the past, we would just take our, our daily filings down to the clerk's office and file them. And they would store them in the computer and label them and give them whatever magic codes they want. Now we have to e-file everything. So whereas it took 30 seconds in the good old days up until a couple of years ago to walk down the hallway with our daily stack of filings and give it to the clerk. Every time you have to sign in and file a document is about a five to seven minute process per document. Well, that's getting to be a lot more onerous time-wise on what it takes to get the job done in the office. So that, the next thing I anticipate with the retirement, within a year or two of the juvenile courtroom referee, he currently does all of his findings. And I, normally what you see going on around the state, juvenile court is pushing the drafting of all the findings off on the state's attorney's offices. So I anticipate that to come down in a year or two when the referee, Dale Thompson, decides to retire. So that being the case, I'm looking at adding on a staff. I did get a call from an very experienced paralegal in another state's attorney's office who kind of moved to a place about 30 miles away, asking if we had a position. And if Connie ever pulls a plug, it would be great to have somebody in here that has experience in, is a paralegal in the state's attorney's office. So that is a possibility to have somebody come in. But that's the high lights. You see that there's a change of a different line item, I can't remember off the top of my head what it's called, but $23,000, $24,000. We used to have a grant for victim witness advocate where we, that would kind of run as a pass-through. And that was the local match. SAFE didn't get the grant this year. That being the case, the victim notifications still fall on our office when it comes to giving notifications to crime victims as to when somebody comes up for an initial appearance, a bond hearing, a preliminary hearing, a sentencing. And that's something that we're gonna have to try to get going on as far as coming out of our office rather than relying upon a victim witness advocate to do that. We're still gonna get some of the victim witness advocate services really pro bono from SAFE because we've worked with them doing this for 25 years. But when it comes down to it, all the victim notifications don't come on to, a contractor they come upon, come upon the state's attorney's office. And that's one of the other reasons why we need to move into the next step technologically. We don't, do not use any sort of an automated system at this point. One was put together a number of years ago on a grant to the state through the, I think it was the A G's office called the STARS program, State's Attorney Record System. We haven't done that because whereas it does make things more automated, it also takes a lot of data entry, a lot of time into data entry. And at some point, you know, they've been upgrading this over the years. Hopefully it gets more and more user-friendly and less labor-intensive and time-intensive. But as the state pushes more and more toward paperless files, at some point, we're probably gonna have to move into that realm in my office too. So that being the case, and case loads, you know, I look at other counties that have similar caseloads and similar staffing, like, you know, Richland County, Barnes County, Suttsman County. Case, counties which have similar caseloads have a lot more staff. Even other counties that have less caseload than us have two full-time lawyers and like two to three full-time staff. So we've been getting by pretty good for 25 years. But at this point, I was asking in the budget to get a full-time paralegal in addition to one or more.
I'm not, I'm not sure whether this is legitimate to ask, but I was under the understanding that Maran had some problems with working in the building?
Well, she's had some issues with allergies, our air handling system has something in there that she reacts to. I did talk with her about that. She would probably try to bring up an ozone machine and put in the office. That could be hopefully, I don't know what ozone machines do, but it seems to help her.
So she can handle 40 hours a week in the office?
And it's, you know, both she and I come and go too. I mean, I've done the law enforcement center for hearings and bond hearings and whatnot. I'll meet with officers down there. She'll go to child protection team meetings and things like that too. So that's, we do kind of go a bit, so we do get some fresh air once in a while.
So you said that the magic grant thing that disappeared, that was $23,000? That was under miscellaneous? So then what's, what's the additional money under miscellaneous that's not being budgeted anymore?
Well, I think that might have been where I put in, you know, with adding staff, we'll probably have some more things like some more copier costs, maybe a computer, things like that. I figured if you add staff, you're gonna have more expenses at some point. That's kind of where.
But you didn't put anything into miscellaneous for the coming year?
What's that?
You didn't put anything into miscellaneous for the coming year?
Or I didn't?
That was where we took all that grant money. But you did put 2,000 capital outlay.
Yes, for that bit for computers.
And office supplies, you're up 500.
Yeah, and I see that, but that was just my question is, you know, you said you had $23,000 was the magic grant, which you had 38 budgeted last year. So, you know, what was the other 15,000 doing that it's not in there anymore? That's really the question, I don't want to under budget.
That was a pass, you know, we had, we had, it was a 20% local match. We had other things that we did to get that zero out, so it really wasn't 23,000 out of the county budget. We were getting local match through various other sources, whether it was donations or in-kind.
So basically, we would write the check to SAFE and they in turn, the health department would write us a check back. But we had to include it in Maran's budget in order to.
Yeah, because I see you only had, you don't have that budget, you're only at $9,500 this year. So basically, the patches, you're never getting it back.
For the longest time, we've been getting by with victim advocate services, which under 12.134 are the duty of the state's attorney's office, getting the grant and having their safe alternatives for abused families doing the victim witness advocacy for us. But there are things that, if you look at the 12.134 code hardened pass, technically, we're supposed to be sending out notifications to every crime victim of initial appearances and bond hearings and preliminary hearings in every case. Theoretically, that includes NSF checks, death cases. You know, we've been, SAFE has usually been more along the lines of personal injury kind of things, whether it's, you know, domestic violence or burglaries and, you know, things like that. And I do, you know, they come in and get all the, they come in and get all the files. They look through them themselves, so that's, and it doesn't take a lot of supervision on our part. So, and I do know that they do a good job of getting me the information we need. But we haven't been doing it on a lot of the simple property kind of offenses, which in theory isn't quite following the victim notification laws. But a lot of times, our businesses are not too interested on when somebody has an initial appearance or a bond hearing on an NSF check. They don't really need to know that and don't want to know it. But if we have somebody whose garage is broken into, whose home is broken into, by all means, they get those notices. And I don't envy the commission as far as budgeting this year with things as they are.
Well, your all-in-all budget isn't, actually, it's not, not much higher than it was last year. It's 26,000. That's not, that's not bad for a new hire at 38 and a hard time going to full-time. You know, you're making some money out of somewhere.
And it would be nice as far as, you know, you are in the office full-time. Because if she's not there and I'm somewhere else, it does get to be a little bit more onerous if you have somebody come in off the street and they need some legal attention right away. His business related, that is something that's not, people just kind of get free little advice. Whether it's a mental health committal or an officer needing a search and seizure question answered on a quick, short notice.
Any other questions for Lonnie?
I could go get some more work done until 5:30, unless you want me to stick around if there's anything.
No, I think that's fine. Okay. Jess here, we'll take you.
All right. I'm hoping any questions at the commission they have on my budget for 2017 calendar year. Hard to believe it's close by that fast time. Full expenses of $149,867, less than $2,000 are than last year. With revenues of $151,704, $65,000.
Do you not request any more from Ramsey County than you did last year?
No. It's, it's one of those things where, you know, we're allowed up to two mils, but I've never felt comfortable asking for two mils because a mil's so much in Ramsey County. You know, there's some of my counties that just flat out give you the two mils without questioning it. There's others that very much question it and, you know, they don't. Some of them give a percentage of a two mil deal similar to Ramsey County. Others of them just give them flat out two mil. They've never, it never really been a rhyme or reason to some. It's just one of those things that it's always been done this way. And, but we try not to ask for more than what we need. Pretty much balanced. We don't like the deficit spend, that's it. We haven't done that since I've been around and where we have to.
Anybody got any questions for Jill? Pretty strange woman, took a pill.
And little information on those ozone machines that Maran was talking about. I used to sell those way back when. And what they do is they release positive ions into the atmosphere and coat. They attach themselves to the negative ion particles in the atmosphere. And it weighs themselves down and it eliminates them from the, so you're not breathing them in. You know, it kind of smells like sunshine after a rainstorm, kind of thing. Lightning bolts produce the same thing, they're positive ions. So they're, they're very good. I have one in my house, I've had one for years and they're great. They're, and they work good for getting skunk smells out of wood cabins.
Or houses?
What a mess.
My dad had those skunks underneath his cabin and stunk for, that we got those machines in there.
I'm gonna go buy one.
And I did talk to Mr. Juan back to the comprehensive plan update. And he should have a draft done shortly. I said, oh, he would like to have a steering committee meeting, but he wants to make sure that the steering committee A groups are available. So we're gonna need to keep an eye on weather or small grain harvest. And hopefully, there'd be some downtime between small grain harvest and beans, edibles, things like that. Where we could sneak a meeting and meet for a couple of hours without guys going and looking up the watch.
Have to meet at 6:00 in the morning instead of 7:00.
I said, we can, we can be adjustable, but, so we'll, we'll try, try for that within the next couple of weeks. And, you know, hopefully, we can, we can get that all worked out and the. But it, but it sounds like things are on the proper time for completion for this, this year yet. He was up here, met with several people throughout the county. And he said certainly a reoccurring theme is lake stabilization, which I guess is to nobody's surprise.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome, thank you.
Kristin, let's see if we can sneak you in.
Rachel's actually sitting right there.
I'll get you in by 5:00.
No problem. I'm sorry, I missed your message earlier, I was upstairs actually, I was on first floor.
No problem.
Is it my turn?
You're up.
Okay, so do you guys have the budget that I sent into Elizabeth in your packet? Or would you like a copy?
Nope, it's in the packet.
It's in the packet, okay. Looking at total revenues from last year's budget, we were at $195,000. And this year, we're requesting a total of $166,000 from all entities and revenue sources. That being that the county is going into, is the request is up to $3,000. Previous year was $47,500. Going on to expenses, some of the things to highlight and changes. One was I did budget a 10% increase in employee benefits for health insurance because health insurance is going up dramatically both. I'm under the chamber plan, but also talking to some of the city people, their, their plan is also going up, so I wonder if it doesn't cross wide. Going down, one of the things I, we are budgeting for is to have drone footage and video footage created off of that for our website and to implement new marketing features within our website for our industrial park and various land and business opportunities within our community. One of the things that we're finding is with that company development, it's from not within your own backyard. A lot of times, it's people from across the United States and various locations. And so if we can implement something like that in our website, it can hopefully better. And so if we can implement something like that in our website, it can hopefully better market our area. Most everything is staying the same, other than the advertising and the webpage expenses for those various reasons. And then, um, total expenses would be one hundred and sixty-five thousand, which is a reduction from one ninety-three or almost one ninety-four last year. Um, so bringing my revenue over expenses being eighty, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars, sixty-eight cents for the year. That's proposed for budget two thousand seventeen. Other questions?
Of course, there's no more rent or clerical expenses. Eighteen thousand dollars have gone. I'm not sure if all the commissioners know, but the Forward Devil's Lake office has moved to the city offices, so those expenses are gone. Um, the new chairman, um, was pretty adamant that he wanted, um, our economic development director doing more traveling to, um, beat the bushes, to try to find new income and new, um, jobs for our community.
Anything else that?
Any questions on programs that we have going or projects that we've done or anything of that nature?
Any commitment for Ramsey County that you've had in the past?
Yes, correct. Um, um, looking at this year, we think it's, um, the reduction in the rent, it was an item that was always taken out of sales tax collection. And so that goes back in there, which sales tax collection dollars then are what run our programs such as, well, it goes into the growth fund, which that runs all the programs. I don't know if you guys have that document attached. It's not, I can certainly hand it out to you. Um, and I did give a little, a little synopsis here. It's better or easier to. That top sheet is a three-year summary of what we've all provided as, as far as programs within our community. It shows you the difference between public dollar investment and private dollar investment. And so for two thousand fourteen, we had just over five hundred thousand in private, or public dollars, excuse me, invested, which resulted in five point six million dollars in private dollars in development within our community. Of that, um, outside of the many grant funds of five thousand dollars, everything else is payable back at the end of the life of the loan. So that five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars comes back to the community, back into the growth fund that I talked about, that sales tax generated. Um, going on, you see two thousand fifteen, it's two hundred and fifty-nine thousand compared to eleven million dollars in private investments. And then additionally, two thousand sixteen, where we're currently at for this year is we've invested just under seventy-seven thousand dollars. And it's resulted in four point eight million dollars in private investment within our community. So over the last three years, we've had eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars invested on behalf of our community on that growth fund, which again, thirty thousand is all that is not paid back at the end of the life of the loan. And that has resulted in just under twenty-two million dollars worth of public developments within our community. So I think we're seeing a, a really good return on our investment. And all of these developments are successful developments within our community. And you guys have the details in your packet, in the shape of all the different businesses and products that we've, how we've spent it. So I think we're, we've really been fortunate to have this flex funding program. So we've made the north quarter that we're able to leverage our community dollars against state dollars. The state dollars are the, in essence, like a grant. And then the community dollars are paid back at the end of the life of the loan. And so it allows us to allow them to access the state funds to make the project more feasible. Any questions? I wasn't quite sure how to go about calculating the property tax increases we've collected over the last three years off of these developments to see what the county and city of each, uh, actually gained out of these projects. But it seemed to be a lot more in-depth process than what I was willing to go through at this point. But, um, I think you would definitely see that it's been a larger, um, gain as far as property tax for the community than it has been in investment, so.
You'd fund it all, though?
It would be.
Maybe enough over there in the back office and have a line on all of that.
I could maybe give her a list of all the businesses and what we, we'd say that provide them and.
Everybody'd know that.
I think that's pretty important. I know that there's been some talk about failure on the part of Forward Devil's Lake without seeing in dollars and cents the kind of return on investment that is there. And I think you've done a pretty big job of showing us and hopefully the rest of the public that it isn't the worthwhile to invest in our community because it's a huge return.
And it says twenty-two million dollars of development. I think all of us see it throughout the community, so. Thank you.
Kristen.
Hi.
Hi.
I have a big theme that was to cut budgets this year. I tried to do so, um, not go up anyway from where I was sitting last year in my emergency management, hazardous chem, risk management budgets. Um, the DES grant budget, which I don't know what that is, sorry, but that's still the same. And that's fifty thousand dollars, not that we're spending out. Um, it's budgeted in there. If there's a certain grant that Ramsey County needs to pay up before we get reimbursed, before we get that money back, that's where that pot of money sits, where that comes into play. So it's not money that we will be paying out and not getting back in return in twenty twenty. Thank you. So that is, I know that's, you know, quite a big money from even two years ago where we only had ten thousand dollars in account. I had sold with Betty. Um, then when we had some larger grants come through, um, and at the time it just seemed feasible to put it in there like that. But like I said, the money gets returned back into that account, so it's, it's a watch. There's no money spent, um, where we don't gain it back. As far as hazardous chemical and risk management, um, there's one that hazardous chem conference every other year, um, which it's in rotation with Hazchem and Search and Rescue, which rotates every other year. So there's a minimal amount of money, um, that is ever spent out of that budget. Um, otherwise it's in there for something where it'd be needed for our L.A.P.C. committee. Um, supply-wise, uh, supply why, supplies-wise, excuse me, can't talk miscellaneous. It's there in case, like I said, it's rarely used. Um, and same with risk management, there's one annual training usually in September, October, um, every year. And that usually costs a couple hundred dollars with a massive travel room, one hotel night stay and in the conferences, or the little day conference itself. That usually goes from eight to five, eight to three, depending on who's there, who's teaching, what's going on. Um, emergency management, we still do get a good portion, uh, it's not quite fifty percent. With, um, a grant, Ramsey County does of course come up with the rest of it, like we have every year. Um, fixed charges, um, insurance went up, so that was an increase. Um, I did try to go down in every other listed category as far as, um, even my emergency emergency center. Um, again, that's rarely used, but in the event that something were to happen, I would need those dollars available to myself just to open and operate our emergency operations center. Um, we don't have a computer for our E.O.C. I would like to purchase a laptop for that purpose, um, one that's specified for our E.O.C., for, um, web E.O.C., for other trainings, for anything that I would need. Um, I don't have a price on that. It would be under what would be listed in our twenty-seventeen budget. That's one thought I had with the funds that are in there. Um, and I did keep a little money in the capital reserve fund for any upgrades for my computers as well. Our parts labor went dramatically down combined. Got rid of an expedition a couple of years ago. Now it's just regular maintenance, oil changes, so there's not a lot that comes out of there either.
Unless anyone has any questions, anything that you'd like to see changed or different or unsure of?
You said fixed charges, insurance. What, what, what insurance?
All insurance is one of, across the board, across the ship.
Across the ship.
Oh, correct.
No, no, you're fine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's just a question then, so why does her budget line item have fixed charges on the insurances when the other departments do not?
The general fund carries everybody in the general fund. Hers is emergency management. So a portion of that goes back to the state, doesn't it, for not on fixed charge?
Not fixed charge.
Okay. It's just to keep a paper trail.
So we have to pay paper trail for insurance since we're getting grant funds?
Right.
For their apartment, okay.
For my salary.
Your salary, okay. I, I, it's kind of what I was thinking, but I just wanted to.
And I think we, we pay fifty percent out of her budget anyway, out of the general fund.
So it's kind of general fund anyway. And the state used to be fifty-fifty, but now it's not. It might be thirty-one then, but it, it just depends on how many EMPG, EMPD grant dollars, um, the state gets. And then they divide it up based on population.
So when I do her budget, it's no mill, it's basically half comes out of the general fund and hopefully half comes to the state, but usually it isn't. But it's been pretty good where we haven't had to take any more money out of the general fund than fifty percent, so, of her budget.
Okay, total on the figure.
Kristen, you really did a, you really did remember, um, some of your line items and, and backing down. Hopefully not kind of taking them a little bit too far because it's hard to get back. But, you know, all in all, we're seeing the department here that's coming in. Everybody's always done a really good job with all the line items and stuff. And we're seeing people start to cut things a little bit here and there. So I think in the future, we're gonna have to expect that, that some of this is gonna have to be falling back again. But they're doing a good job this year.
That's what I, you know, in, in a few years, after things maybe come back up, you know, we can revisit. I don't think I strap myself to the point where I'm not gonna be able to make it work. I try to be pretty fruitful in, you know, other things, other purchases, even travel. I know that you was awarded a degree a couple of years ago that, um, there's an international conference that I really enjoy. I get a lot of information out of, and we had agreed that every other year would be, um, the way we could go. Um, and I purposely haven't gone in the last two, I haven't gone in three years. Um, this year, this coming fall, I've looked at it again. Um, we'll just kind of see how my schedule plays out with everything else that's required of me stateside here. And then international conference, it's always, you know, within the forty-eight states, it's always here. It's never, they're not gonna send me to Tokyo. And that I realize, but I, I've been, it's just the banner Georgia this year. Mm-hmm, so I'll just, like I said, I have to play that with my schedule and my home schedule with my son and just kind of take it one week at a time, so we'll see. So I think I'm pretty good as far as, I don't think I strap myself. But you're right, in a few years I might revisit a few things. But right now I feel comfortable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And when's your, just, uh, when's your table bell exercise or your?
For the 24th?
Yeah, exercise.
August twenty-fourth.
I just gotta meet you on it, just a minute ago.
August twenty-fourth, Friday night, six thirty. Feel free to come out. There will be, there will be food. Food, yeah, see, there you go. Red Cross has generously agreed to, um, provide us dinner. All right. And a little bit of sauce. Thank you.
Okay, seeing as it's five-thirty, we'll call a meeting to order.
Would you lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
The commissioners had a chance for a minute for the last meeting. They saw. Sorry. Any discussion? Albows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Minutes are approved. And has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? Better in? Okay.
Sorry. Were you going to move something?
Approved the agenda. Um, I'm going to move the unfinished business on the street study results from Highway Two East to five forty because some gentleman need to get on their way out of town. That fits with the approval of the other commissioners?
Yeah, I'll, I'll approve with the amendment.
Okay. Okay. Albows in favor?
Aye.
Opposed same sign. The motion carries. Can we start two minutes early? Alan? That's what Alan McKay started with the district health budget. Um, it's on page forty-five. We would like to open and see.
Now, we had two big changes this year. Uh, one, we had a market study done for our, our salaries, since everybody else is doing it. Uh, it uses the same lady as all the rest of the counties. Uh, and she did a pretty good job. She took towns or health units the same size as ours. And so they have the same benefits and, and so on. Uh, so that was, that, that cost us a little bit of money. She had to take it down to eighty percent. So far behind, eighty percent of market. Uh, we gave two choices to the board, eighty percent and eighty-five. Uh, the board chose the eighty-five percent level and plus one percent for those people who weren't getting anything at eighty-five percent. And then the state cut all immunization funds to the health unit per. So now we're going to buy, uh, private vaccine for all shots that we give. So that, it's very spendy, especially to start with, so that has increased quite a bit. Um, we'll see how that goes down the road. Um, we bill all, just about every insurance that we encounter, um, so we're pretty lucky there. Uh, we've had to eat the few after give the shot, but when they can't pay, there's not much you can do. So, uh, but most insurances, we bill most insurances now through computer billing, which makes it a little easier and you get more of your money. So, but, um, those are the big changes in, in the budget from last year. Does anybody have any particular line item they'd like to talk about or anything?
Do you have a percentage jump on salaries?
Percentage?
Percentage jump for salaries.
Percentage is based on salaries?
Okay, percentage on salaries, it really didn't come out as a salary percentage. Um, it, it did go up. Uh, I guess the figure would have been in the, the whole figure was like seventy thousand dollars for the whole, all twenty employees combined. Um, so whether that, I don't have a percentage. It wasn't deemed as a percentage. It was trying to match what the market pays the same person in five other health units around the state.
And of course, we can go to a hundred percent of that because that would probably double the total budget salary. But we, last year we were at eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, four seventy-two. And, uh, with that, with that change, proposed change, it gives nine hundred and five thousand, six ninety-two.
The other counties all right with this?
What's that, yeah, so far, this is, this is the last, this, I, I've been to all three except for Ramsey County. Yeah, yeah, so, as far as I know, Pierce was a little concerned about the salary increase. They'd rather seen less, but that's, that's what the board decided, so that was a majority vote.
And there still will be a conference call with them?
Oh, yes, September sixth.
Before it's over.
Yes, September sixth at eight thirty AM.
Yeah.
Everybody will be a roll call vote, you know, on the budget, yeah, so we'll see if anybody, and it wasn't any major issues at the, at the, when I was there, other than, you know, they, they would wish it was less, of course, but, so, we'll see there. Nothing I've been, you know, called up and put on the pad for, but, yeah.
Benson County was all right with it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Benson County. Yeah, Mike Stephan is our chairman of the health board, so, yeah.
You said the, you mentioned that the vaccine, is that that vaccine other for the eighty thousand dollars then?
Yeah, it was twenty thousand last year.
It was twenty last year, so it's sixty thousand.
Yeah, yeah, it was quite an increase, and we're hoping that will cover it. It's a, it's a whole new world out there, so we.
What, what happened to the state in terms of why did they pull the plug?
Why did they do that? They thought everybody has health insurance, so there's no, no reason to provide vaccine to anybody, their insurance company can pay for it. That's not quite totally true. There's quite a few people that still don't have insurance, and quite a few people that choose not to have insurance because it's too expensive, and then you have the ones that have it and still have to pay out of the pocket, so they don't, you know, they don't go to the doctor, so, because they have to pay out of their own pocket. So it's, it's still not the best of deals, but we'll see what happens.
Mr. McCade did indicate to me that he's going to have two nurses retiring shortly.
Yeah.
And it's, as a couple of the other commissioners have mentioned to me, trying to hire professional people at some standard wages gets to be pretty difficult, and I know that in the last four years on the boards that I've sat on, that that situation has occurred, it has been difficult, and I know the benefits are good, but it's pretty hard to feed your family on health insurance benefits. There comes a point in time where you, you kind of have to try to catch up somehow. I guess the board by majority felt that this was, at, at starting at eighty-five percent, at least we were gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood. Of note, the people who don't get any increase are the people who have been hired last.
Yeah.
Because the newest employees are closer to where the, where the median income is, and that kind of makes for a tough working environment when you've been working somewhere for twenty years and you're getting paid the same as somebody who just got out of school last month.
We didn't have much choice, we couldn't, the last nurse we hired, we had to raise the salary or we wouldn't have got one, so.
And so this is a.
You're darned if you do it.
A step in the right direction. I know that through the years, the district health unit has been extremely frugal. We had a former administrator who took no raise for thirteen years because she needed that money to give her employees some kind of a raise. And what the district health unit has done historically over the years is one year we'll give a fifty dollar or a hundred dollar a month raise, and then the next year we'll give a percentage raise. Well, when you give a fifty or a hundred dollar a month raise, your clerical assistants and so on and so forth are getting a fairly good raise, your professional people are kind of getting smacked across the chops for want of better terminology. It's a, it's a tough way to, to keep things even, and so that's, that was the decision of the board. Any questions for Alan?
On that, the total dollar figure that you're looking for from, from us, from Ramsey County, what, what does that compare to the last year?
That would be about fifty thousand dollars more.
And are you still, you're still within the max?
Yeah, we can only go to five mils, and this will be, right now, I figured it with two thousand fifteen land values, we're, we're, we're gonna be at that four point level, but that will drop down once they get the new ones, but it's four point three four the way I figured it with two thousand fifteen. With two thousand sixteen values, it will be less than that. I don't know exactly how much less, but it will be less. So, and all, all my auditors have told me the same thing, from, from Eddie to Vincent to Pierce, that it was going to be less than that, so. Yeah, we've tried to stay in that three point five to four, you know, point two to the last ten years, but it gets difficult sometimes, but, yeah.
But you don't want to max out?
No, 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 so, okay, anybody else have any question?
Now, do you need a motion?
Not from here, that goes at the September sixth, this is a kind of an informa, a hearing, get some comments, what your questions were, if you had any, you know, concerns, that kind of thing.
Are you dropping any programs?
Well, knock on wood, we'll see, it depends on what all comes down from the state and the feds. At this point, we're gonna try not to. It depends who we can hire for the new positions in September, but we're, we're trying to keep all the programs going. That's, that's kind of important for public health, especially when times are tough, we get more people coming to us, so you try to keep the programs going that you have.
Hope anybody does have any questions that you could call.
Okay, yeah, I'm right up here, yeah, call me anytime, so, thanks.
Thanks, Alan. Okay, now let's skip down to unfinished business. I guess I don't know your name, sir.
Brad Vining.
Brad Vining is here, from Vining Oil, David Vining from Vining Oil, and Neil Ackerman, and Jim Ackerman. And so, and then we also have Greg Semenko here from the State Highway Department. Let's hear your concerns, gentlemen, and see where we're going, and see what we can do.
I think they all know that we have sent information to Greg and state that there have been accidents on the intersection there, and our concerns about how much traffic is starting to build up on Highway Two, the amount of traffic going in and out of the various subdivisions and stuff, so we have been talking with Greg a couple of times already, and he is, has some more ongoing studies and stuff that he's doing out there, maybe we should let him share, or has somebody got something to say? Do you want to share what you're doing right now, or do you think Dave you run top?
Well, I guess we're concerned about hitting the turning lanes and pick up the speed lanes. We, probably customer count out there is a good six, seven hundred a day, sometimes more, sometimes less. We're concerned about the accidents that has happened there. We see turning lanes going in all over, we get requests for them, and we got turned down the first time because they said these are money. Next time, we talked about these, we just told them that that road would be built up for heat, so then they could probably do it then, and I don't know if that was where that all come from, but that's what we were told anyway, and, and, and now we sit here in the last couple of weeks, it's been accidents there, so. I think our customer count is pretty good, and I'm concerned about the public pulling in there, and all, and I guess safety reasons is why we want that. I don't want to have people feel uncomfortable coming out there because of, and I see them all over, even going into some parts with the streaming lanes and stuff, and that's a great thing, but I think we have a pretty good. Vietwen, I guess you got anything to add to that, Dan, or?
No.
Pretty much, basically, they turned it down, and we just told them we'd never get one there, so that's one of the wonderful body.
That seems to be exceptionally difficult for truck traffic, and you guys do do quite a bit of truck traffic getting out of your business.
I worry about some gas or propane bill are coming out of there and getting deep open. Not that it can happen or anything, but I think a couple of years ago, somebody lost their life.
Yes, and I was the first person on that accident, and I've been pretty adamant about something needing to be done ever since I, it shouldn't have happened.
No.
It was, it was terrible thing for that truck driver to have to make a decision whether to pull out in front of oncoming traffic and possibly kill somebody, or leave his semi trailer across the Westbound lane and ended up, someone lost their life. And it was, I'm sorry, it is a little difficult to even speak about because you have to be afraid of that. So, yes, something you need to.
Did you see that?
You're absolutely right, that, you know, going out of town all the way out to Schmalz's welding shop, there's turnoff lanes all the way out to there, they're putting turnoff lanes out on nineteen, turnoff lanes on old two, and turnoff lanes on new two. Greg, why can't we have turnoff lanes? When with two hundred and fifty vehicles a day, or seven hundred vehicles a day, and isn't that, doesn't that account enough to have turnoff lanes?
I'm not exactly sure, Bill, what the warrants are for turn lanes, what the number is, however, we have taken the information that you've given us, we've turned it over to our traffic ops people, people go through and analyze all of this, and they are in the process of analyzing this. We're not looking at one intersection alone, we're looking at the total corridor coming from Elk's Drive all the way out past Bean Plant, so that we can analyze the capacity, the vehicle movements, the turning movements, and how many, and the speed of that area. From that study, they will give us a recommendation of what they think should be done in order to make that area safer, okay? And until that's done, we're not gonna make, I really can't tell you what is gonna happen. It could be do nothing, it could be access consolidation, removing approaches and consolidating it, and using a frontage road concept, putting in U turns, J turns, or any of the above altogether, but we're looking at the entire corridor. So sometime by December, we should have that portion of it completed. At that time, I can give you some more answers, okay?
So the warrant study said that there was, it warranted putting a turn in to the campground, is that correct? Because they're putting that in now, right?
Yep.
The, I, I get mixed up about which, what the names of all the campgrounds are around there.
At Hayvale Heights.
At Hayvale Heights.
When we did that study.
So they have, for six hundred?
When we did that study, we studied every intersection from Rugby, from west of Rugby all the way to Lacona, and we highlighted every intersection out there that we thought could possibly use or warrant turn lanes. And out of that, there's only a few of them that came up, and that's what we're building today, okay? The rest of them did not warrant the turn lanes at that time.
When was that study done?
I think we started that project in twenty thirteen. And we did this corridor, so when we did turn lanes, we did the whole Devil's Lake District on Highway Two. They did the whole Minutet District on Highway Two. They did Grand Forks District on Highway Two, so we're doing them as corridors. So we looked at them all.
And there's been a very significant amount of change that has happened out on the six miles east of Devil's Lake that probably a lot of it was there when you did the initial study, but the amount of traffic that's out there right now, Greg, you know, I'm not gonna talk about my own situation, but over fifty percent of the time, I am challenged to get off the highway. That's how much traffic is on that road, and I can't imagine if you went out there and did a study, how it would be to get off at the gas station, at the other campgrounds, or at the new developments that have been going on in the residential properties. There's hundreds and hundreds of vehicles.
And that's why, that's why we need to study it to figure out where the turning movements are happening. If you've got fifty of here and you've got five hundred here, maybe we need to put those fifty over there. We don't know that, that's what we're looking at. And until we can decide that, we can't, we're shooting off, shooting from the hip, and that sometimes gets us in trouble also. And that's why we want to look at it and understand what we're doing before we commit to it. Because as we commit this, as we commit money to these things, we're putting a lifetime investment in it, because a turn lane isn't just there for a couple of years, it's there forever, and every time we pavement, we put an investment in it. Every time we move snow out there, we, it costs me an extra half hour per turn lane to move snow along those roads. That extra half hour means that that main line isn't being, snow isn't being removed. We look at all of that, that's part of the setup. We look at the capacity of the highway, is it capable of handling that kind of volume? Do we need to change something there? That's what we're looking at, okay? When we get it done, we'll bring it back to you, let you see it.
We realize that, you realize that the bindings and the Ackermans have put lifetime investments in out there too, and they don't want to see any of those lives die.
Yep, but I can also tell you this, Bill, that in the, if you go out west right now, if you're gonna put in a development like that, we'll ask you to provide a traffic op study to the state. We won't do it for you, we will ask the developer to give it to us, so that we can then look at it and decide what needs to be done.
Okay.
So that's part of it, so that's why we're doing this.
Let me ask you, gentlemen, this, did you provide that traffic op study to the State Highway Department before you put your development in, or before you put your business in?
What is a traffic op study? Nobody knows.
Signed, it's signed by the, by a registered engineer that's developed it and looked at it. If you go online, the DOT website, you'll find it right there, so. I know Ackerman, his access went in in two thousand eight, bindings went in in twenty ten, and at that time, it probably wasn't there. But anymore, that's what we look at, and so we're looking at the whole corridor, not just one area, but the whole area.
How are we coming with that study? I saw a lot of engineering going on out there, or a lot of surveying going on out there, some stakes along the highway, how are we coming with that, Greg?
That's a turn lane for Elk's Drive and, and.
Oh, even all the way out to, all the way out to Vining Oil, there's been people putting stakes in ditches and.
We've got a slurry seal coming up on that stretch of property, on that stretch of the highway, so we're gonna be.
So that isn't your study going on?
The study is being done right now, and they're trying, they're trying to get traffic counts and get all of that. So we expect sometime in December to have it done.
You know, it wasn't very long ago, we asked for a turnoff lane, another turnoff lane into the Cliff subdivision because it's been developed, and low and behold, there's three turnoff lanes going into the Cliff subdivision, there's fifty homes out there, there's two hundred. There's 200 on the other side. I can tell you that if 50 will get three turnoff lanes, 200 should get three turnoff lanes.
And maybe we need to go take some of them out.
700 should get a turnoff lane.
And maybe we need to take some of them out. Because at the time we did some of those things, we thought we were doing the right thing. What we're noticing now is we didn't.
Oh, no. Everybody has to dive out of the ones you got there to get off. There was no mistakes made there. Those are necessary. When you go into Grand Forks, you go into Rugby, you go into any place else, they got turnoff lanes on every approach, Greg.
Yep. And I can also say that the approaches out there have not hit the high risk, high crash, high risk, high crash intersections that we recognize within the state. We do an analysis of that every year. Those intersections haven't reached that point yet.
So does somebody have to die at every intersection before you do it?
No, no, they're not. They analyze everyone to the risk and to the crashes that have occurred and what's going on. And as we look at that, there are others within the state that are a higher risk than these out here. And so that's where we are putting our resources to fixing those correctly right now. Now that you've given us the letter, we have started a traffic ops to look at this, which we would have never done had you not taken the initiative to send that. And that's where we're at.
What I noticed being out there is, when they dropped the traffic down to 55, when all the trucks were hauling, that, that did more than anything. And so, I was always upset when they cranked her back up to 70 after the trucking was done. So, what I see from being there, if they dumped that speed limit from bindings all the way into town, take it down to 55, you know, that would be a big deal alone before, you know, it just... You get her up to 70 and then they push her to 75, and there's some, there's some speed moving through there. And that's, that's what I think would be good, to drop it even before you get your studies and all that stuff done because there's just a lot of stuff going on through there. There's more people driving on the rumble strip when you live there. It's a wow. You know, Craig, he knows, it's, there's somebody, you never had that at 55, but when they zipper back up, it's, it's a whole nother world out there.
And what gets me is how come the state can have a 55 mile an hour speed limit on everything south of town, on those highways? And it seems like the traffic moves through there just as fast as, as they have to go. Why have that extra speed in there? I know, I just, I got it yesterday. I was that close to getting it turned off. And when you get to them intersections that we start, I'm familiar with bindings and cars out there. But when, I was coming, here, here was, I was coming from Devil's Lake out. So I was on my right hand side, there's a road where I turned into the, I was watching the cars behind me coming when I was down the road. And I'm usually trying to slow up or something to spread them out, but these didn't spread out. And when I got to my turnoff, I crawled out early, got off of the, got off of the rumble strip and I grabbed it completely in there. And then the other car was turning, making a left-hand turn on that same intersection then. This car that was coming, coming to be hell, and he just had room enough to get in between us. And that, that would have taken care of it.
And that's every single day.
Yeah.
You know, I've had more telephone calls in the last three months than I've had in four years. They want something done. You have to have a temporary solution before you get a permanent fix because we can't wait for someone else to die out there. We can't wait for someone else's, you know, to have injuries, to have deaths. You know, I understand procedures, Greg, as much as anyone else. I was a federal employee. I went through all of that. But we have to have a temporary fix. And it just seems to me that ideas such as lowering the speed limit, Highway 19 has a lowered speed limit, Highway 2 has a lowered speed limit to the west, Highway, Highway 57 has a lowered speed limit. They've got frontage roads and turnoff lanes, and they still have a lowered speed limit. We've got nothing out there except 70 mile an hour traffic plus, and nowhere to turn off. And we've got to have some help temporarily until the study gets done. I, I understand procedures, and I, and I commend you for facing what you're facing. But we've gotta have a temporary solution. You know, we sure had temporary solutions when the state highway and the, and the dike were being built, and we put temporary turning lanes in then for those trucks and all that stuff that was going on out there then. That all got done. But now, when, when we're dealing with this on a daily basis, it just seems like we're not getting the help we need from you. And that, and that's, I believe that's why these gentlemen are here tonight. And I believe that that's what we are requesting of you. We know you're gonna give us a permanent solution.
I would like to, you know, like Hayvale, the campsite out there. That's a seasonal thing basically from the end of May to September. And you justify that turnoff there. And actually, if I was gonna do it, I'd put it on the north side of the road. Where they're coming from the east, it's on the wrong side of the road, in my opinion. And I'm not no engineer, but just common sense would put it on the other side. And counting on the way out there, there's turnoff lanes going into farmyards. And cynics just started their deal here or so ago. They got turnoffs and turnins and everything right there. And, and we've been sitting out there, and I think we got as much traffic as they got in their new location yet to date. So, I appreciate you coming and listening to us, I really do. But I'm concerned about the health of the people that are turning off there. I was not happy when somebody else, that somebody got killed because we had requested it. And maybe it would have happened anyway, but we don't know that.
And that's what, that's why we're looking at it. And we're gonna look at the whole, the whole...
I can't have, I can't bring somebody in on a frontage road for a half a mile. I can't be turned away from that.
So, we're gonna look at it, we'll bring it back, and the county will tell us what they wanna do out there.
I appreciate everybody listening.
Just one question, Greg. This study you talked about, that, you know, it should have probably been done before the development? What did you call it again? An op...
Traffic operations study.
Who does that?
K L J will do it for you. The developers will hire their own consulting firms to do it. We won't do it.
You would go by that?
What's that?
The state highway would follow something like that, a guideline?
Yes.
They would?
Because when these guys do that, they're putting their stamp on that says that they have done it in a professional engine, they would.
Okay.
You know, and that's, you know, we take a lot of pride in that. And that's, and that's why they've gone to that out west. The other side of it is, is that we also make sure that things are put in before we make a commitment to it.
You talked about the cost. You know how many tax dollars we pay from that place?
Yep.
For gas and fuel between federal and state? Probably about a million bucks a year. And you're talking about not giving us a little turny lane that you can't get the snow off. So, you take 47 cents a gallon and 41 on gas between state and federal. It's a lot of money. That's all we got undone. Thank you for your time. Yeah, we're done with this.
Okay. Thanks a lot, you guys.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
I appreciate all of you coming. I wish I had an answer tonight. Obviously not. Thank you. Thanks, Greg. Anybody have any other questions?
Just one more question for Greg. Just from a standpoint of, we're not gonna see what the finished product is on the long-term fix until December. So, if you come back with something and say that it doesn't warrant a turn, say, at binding or any other place along that line, what are our options gonna be at that point, number one? And number two, even if you say we could put one in, what are we gonna have to budget? Because we need to, if we're gonna get it done next year, which would be the preferable option, we're gonna need to budget now with the assumption that we might have to do that then.
See, and that's the whole, that's the whole kicker. Because we're already programming projects out into 18, 19, and 20 for our money. Our money for 17 is high. It's high. And that's, and it's not a good thing. I can't tell you exactly. There may be safety funds that they could use to put into this. What the additional cost is, I don't know. Some things would be done within our state right of way, then it's no cost to come. Anything that goes off of our right of way would be 20% of that.
Adam, are you thinking about this study then? Is that what you're thinking about, that we budget for that?
No, I'm just asking, I'm asking for the, for the, if you don't see the traffic op study until December, and at that point, yeah...
Well, that's a lot of home.
Well, no, no, well, the stuff, I mean, I don't think, even if you hired a professional engineer from like K L J, it would take time to get it done, you know?
Oh, right, and they're already studying that same intersection with that.
I, I love the assumption we're better off waiting until we see their traffic op studies. What I'm saying is, is, say they come back and they say, you know, you're, we'll put a left turn lane there, we'll put an left turn lane there, but maybe there are spots that we still feel a left turn lane should be warranted. Maybe they're close to that warrant number, but they don't meet your threshold or something of that nature. Then if we wanna do it ourselves as a county, because we feel it's a safety issue that needs to be taken care of, if we wanted to get it done now, you know, next construction season, we would have to budget accordingly now. I mean, what is a cost ballpark to put in a left turn lane at this point in time?
Left turn lane, about $200,000.
$200,000, okay.
Right turn lane, about $150,000. So if you do a full intersection, four and, all four, about $4,700,000.
The state would let the county do this?
No.
No.
It would be, the state would do the work.
They'd do the work.
But we're gonna bill you for anything that's gone off, off of our right of way.
Yeah, and that's kinda part of where we're coming to the problem too. So if you come back with the traffic op study and say that a left turn lane isn't warranted in any of these locations, since you guys control the right of way in the highway, we can't ask you, even if we pay, we could ask you and say we would pay for it.
Well, see, that's, I'm not sure how that part of it works. What to pay for, because we typically, we started to do that out west and said, hold it, no, 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 no. We gotta come back, we gotta look at warrants. Because if you put something, like I say, it goes back to putting something in, and we own it for the rest of our life, you know, and we pay for it, maintain it, gada, gada, gada. So they've kinda gone back on that. Where at one time, I think that we're allowing private industry to put in turn lanes, and then they said, no, we're, we're making a mistake. So, that part I cannot answer exactly.
Can you explain that to a different person?
But if we come back, they'll give you the options of yes, that, and the other thing. And the reasons why. But then on the other side of the thing, they'll have to sit down and have that conversation.
What's the normal timeframe for something like that to happen? Are we talking December, January?
It's, I'm thinking, they tell me December, by the time they get the study done. By the time the director gets through with it and hands it over again, it's probably January. So...
Well, I guess what we can do is they can use safety funds as quickly as possible once you get your study done.
And that's, that's what we're hoping would fall under the safety laws.
I have a question for you. Sorry. Do you, do you have to have a completed study before you lower the speed limit in that stretch of highway?
We did the speed study, and it showed that the speeds weren't the cause. It was more of some of the turning movements. So having said that, we've gone back now, and we're gonna incorporate that speed study within the traffic op study. To see if that may be part of the solution, lowering the speed limit. But anytime you lower a speed limit, you also gotta bring in enforcement. And enforcement is the key to any of the reduced speeds. And, and so that's the other part of it. So you look at that side of it, and you look at the capacity of the roads, the turning movements, where the people are moving in and out of, why they're moving there.
I guess my question was just because they were looking for something that could be done temporarily in the meantime, that might create a safer environment for those traveling through.
And that's why we did the speed study early that prompted all of this. And that's where we decided, that's where we came back with the feeling that the speed wasn't the problem. It's the turning. And that's where we gotta look at. Are we providing adequate space for everybody to move through there?
Don't those two go hand in hand?
Yes, they do.
So then the speed?
How could, could it not?
Hundreds of turns day after day after day.
You know?
But it still becomes the enforcement side.
True. But, you know, I know, driving into Minot, the speed limit goes way down for several, several miles before you even get into the community of Minot.
The other side, you have a speed reduction, and somebody will recognize you that's slowing down. Somebody else will... Now you create a speed differential where somebody closes too fast on somebody. And that's the part that we don't like.
And that's what's happening, yeah.
I do thank you for coming personally, Greg, because it's such an issue.
And like I said, we're working on it, just like the director said, in his letter of work. And we'll come back to you when we get, when we get it completed, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Greg.
Man, all the goals, what is... Oh, Roger, you wanna go first?
Sure.
Okay. Windows, chairs, and 2017 budgets.
Yes.
You wanna start with budgets, windows, and chairs?
Oh, I'll list it up there. We'll start with windows. Got two estimates regarding windows for the armory. Installing all nine windows. One from a glass shop for vinyl windows come to a total of $10,057.68. That I asked, I heard from Thompson's. They did not want to put in vinyl windows. They felt that composite or aluminum windows are much better. And for the composite windows, it was $21,357. The aluminum windows was $22,524. I got vinyl windows in my house, and they're great.
And what floor are they on?
Pardon?
And what floor are they on?
The floor?
The vinyl, what, the vinyl windows?
Armory.
Going in the armory, and people can't get, people can't, you know, they can't hardly even reach those windows, so...
Well, they're easy enough to reach, but I don't, I personally don't see why it would be an issue. And I mentioned to Greg from Thompson's, I said, well, I got vinyl windows in my house, and they're great. And he goes, yeah, vinyl windows in a home are good, but vinyl windows in a commercial setting are not. I happened to talk to a building inspector for the city last night, and I asked him if he knew of any problems that might occur with vinyl windows in a commercial setting. And he said he wasn't aware of any problems that could occur. So, I don't know.
When was the last time you replaced those windows?
We never have.
Never. And so they're...
I'm sure there is.
50 years old?
Yeah. Uh, I believe the armory was built in 63. Air wooden, wooden windows, wooden frame windows. So, I don't know, I really don't see why vinyl might be an issue, but replace some money to put in something, you know, composite or aluminum. Even if they, even if the vinyl lasted half as long as the aluminum, it'd still be, it'd still be a wash.
What have you got budgeted for?
I got plenty of money in the budget, well, actually even for the most expensive ones, but I don't think that is necessary. So, I guess that's your decision.
All right with the vinyl?
Pardon?
You're all right with the vinyl?
I don't see why not.
I'll make the motion.
I'll start.
There are motions in a second on the floor to accept the ten thousand plus bid for vinyl windows for the armory. Is there any other discussion?
You got one you can get a bid?
Well, it'll be this year. I didn't, we don't have an exact date, no.
Before snowball time, or?
Before snowball time.
Any other questions? Local? Burton's?
Hi.
Leipon?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Haysler?
Hi.
Vinyl windows, chairs?
Okay, chairs. I got two estimates, I was thinking about getting a hundred more chairs for over in the memorial building armory. Got an estimate from Hoyberg's for fifty-seven seventy-nine for a hundred chairs, need them. And then an estimate from ATD Capital, which would be ATD American. And they're the ones that I've always gotten the shares from before, they were forty-seven sixty-seven, and it's the same chair. So.
Motion to approve the forty-seven hundred dollar bid.
Okay, was it forty-seven?
Forty-seven sixty-seven fifteen. And five thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine from Hoyberg's.
It's nice to have the same chairs.
Yeah. And even Hoyberg's, I mean, they would, they would've gotten the same chair, and I pointed out that this is what we're gonna get. So, and he says, yep, he found them, and so. Okay. Budget, do you want me to go through it line by line, or?
No.
We have a motion, in a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. A hundred five dollars, you in?
Yep. We need a local.
You local?
Brown?
Hi.
Leipon?
Hi.
Burton's?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Haysler?
Hi. Budget, each twelve.
Do you want me to go through it line by line, or do you just have any questions regarding the courthouse budget, or? Most everything is staying the same with salaries. Just went with Tanya's request or recommendation. What was it, one percent or two percent, I forget what it even was. But other than that, most everything else pretty well has stayed the same. Electricity, steam heat, utilities, phone services, maintenance for the courthouse, maintenance contracts, capital outlay, I guess I reduced that a thousand dollars from last year. One thing I did, Elizabeth, do I mention county loan, or do you do that?
I do.
Okay. Now we don't even need to go there. So my budget was a total of three hundred one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So the roof came out of the county loan fund?
The roof did, yes, this year. And.
Chairs and windows.
Pardon?
Chairs and windows.
Yep, chairs, everything, the chairs, windows, all that'll be coming out of this year's budget. With all sixteen.
Does that come out of your capital outlay then?
Well, county loan fund, more.
It's general fund.
Yeah.
And it's, it's set up.
That's set up, okay. Well, I'm comfortable.
Unless Roger wants to spend down some of his sixteen budget on the chairs, we'll tackle.
Well, the chairs will be coming out of this year's.
Okay. I agree with your project, building is a ground.
Yes, oh, well.
We'll tackle it tomorrow.
Yeah.
It's all general, so.
Well, you haven't spent any money out of what you budgeted last year for, for capital outlay?
Uh, no, I think actually all of it has come out of, so far, out of
The loan?
The county loan fund, so, yes, I would have enough in the capital outlay from sixteen to pay for the chairs.
You got one more? We, Greg?
Wee board budget. And we're going with three mils again. And three mils came to a hundred and ten thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars. And then I also had state D that we add to that, that was roughly eighty-five hundred. So my total budget for that was a hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred dollars. And I just shifted around a little bit, salaries now, to put more money into chemical and the labor. Since I finally convinced the guys to use the boom sprayer, they're spraying considerably more than they used to when they just used the wand, the handheld gun. They're spraying two to, two and a half times as much. So, which actually is a good thing, because we should be able to fill more weeds anyway. In theory. So.
But now last year, you asked for one and a half mils. Is that because of?
We've always, I've always asked for three mils, but I've always had a surplus. So I never had to really ask for three mils. We've always used up our surplus, and then there might've only been one and a half mils I needed in new money to make the three mils. Got it down?
Yep.
Okay.
I just.
But now this year, we've, with spraying more, and that's where the most of the money has come to, is in buying more chemical, we've whittled down that surplus to where there isn't much left anymore.
Okay.
So now we're actually gonna have to ask for three mils. We're real close to it, anyway. And if we don't get three mils, then we don't get money back from the state for chemical cost share. Well, mostly chemical cost share.
And basically what that means is, he has to budget at least the dollar figure three mils. We don't have to levy three mils, but his budget has to be.
But it, the budget has to be, you know, hold to three mils.
Yep.
Okay. That's what I wanted to.
Yeah, it's a rule.
Right.
Yeah, for me, yeah.
Did you mind talking about key fob right away, Roger?
Why not?
Yep.
I'm behind schedule.
You're behind schedule? Well, we'll catch up again. Discussion on key fob and security.
He found her last crisis.
Whole business, because Craig is here.
Yep, and, yep, Craig's here to answer any questions.
And you got some questions for him, or local?
The doors, I guess, Ed, you, at the last meeting, kinda requested Craig come for any questions you had regarding the security of the doors?
Well, I think, you know, the door is good. My question is, why lock four doors, and what do you wanna open? So, security is that.
It's a, it's a security measure that prevents, it limits access or, um, vocals, the point of all, access to one position. That way, if there's a threat coming inside the building, we know where it is. We know where it's coming in. And it can't, no sneak attacks. So to speak.
We didn't really come up with any solutions on the parking, though.
I went out and counted all the spots, and there's over fifty spots, just with street parking. Right out in front of our building.
In the whole block?
Just from this end of the block to that end of the block, and right on the north side of the building. And that's alone, over fifty.
How many have you got?
Two.
Two.
No, it would be more than that.
No.
There's two up front, and there's one over there.
Yeah, there's three, three.
Oh, on the, on the north side of the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is one up there. We have two up here on the west side.
Two that would be easily accessible to the west side. I think one of the questions we had was, if, if we locked down the cell doors here, and we use the key fob system, are they easily overridingable for when we have bigger events, so you can just open them up, turn the system off, just for those days when we're, you know, like, browned up in those days?
Yeah, you're just going, you're just going to software and schedule it to be open. If you wanted to schedule it ahead of time, so that you have that egg deal going on, and you want the door to unlock at nine o'clock that day, it automatically do it.
It's like a, it's got software that goes right to your computer, you can operate it right from there.
So twice a year, we could do that without a tiny problem?
Yeah. And if you wanted it to be on the front door, as well, the one door that's open, it'll even open to public. You could have it open and go on there and lock it down in an emergency situation, no one actually have to go to the door and lock it. Or there's other devices on it.
That's good.
That, the bid that you gave was?
That was for about four door kits, so they could easily add that door without a lot of, actually, expense.
And that included deposit and everything, your bid?
That was like forty-six hundred dollars.
Forty-nine, forty-eight, something like that.
Little under five.
Little under five.
Little under five. Forty-nine, forty-eight.
Yep.
So could you program them independently for meetings or anything like that, then?
Yep. Hey, you can go in and set up your schedule, and set it up, there's a holiday or whatever, that at that time you want to unlock. Or if you don't want to unlock the access to the building that day, you can block everybody else. And do whatever you wanna do with it, basically. Joe comes into work, and you're going on the coming up morning, yeah.
We still have the question of, you know, Lonnie brought up the fact, like, when you have big jury trials or something like that, you would have, you would have parking issues. I mean, there's no doubt about that, in certain situations, it wouldn't be often, but.
Would you just kinda lock the doors, you wanna?
And that would be the situation.
But you guys, that might be a situation where you wanna keep it locked. And you know what, it isn't gonna kill anybody who walk the half of block. Come on, though.
The prisoners who are in chains, they're gonna be parked at the back door, and the sheriff's gonna have a way to get them in the door. They're not gonna have to walk too far.
It might even be an insurance benefit.
Well, of course it is.
Who could answer the handicap situation, is that enough access for handicap, or?
If we find that it's not, we could make an additional spot or two, correct?
Well, there is, the handicap really wouldn't change, because nobody's supposed to be parking in a handicap spot out in front, anyway. And it's the handicap doors in the front are the ones that we're gonna leave open for our general public access. So handicap shouldn't change.
But assume if we see that the handicap spots are being used more, then
But if they were, we could, yes.
We could add a third handicap spot, because if it's a charity city, they would have to help with that.
I'm sure there, yeah.
If we needed an additional spot or two, it don't perceive that to be an issue at all. We could add that in the front, on the west side.
Craig, who'd, where would you put the control for the, would that be with the emergency manager, the auditor, and where you want, or?
In one of the closets, and you could pass the software on any computer, or all the computers you want it to be on.
Just like the surveillance system, it would be nice to have it on a couple of computers in case one of us is gone, just like we do now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you guys can work on it together, ten, Roger, or for yourself.
Yeah, it'd be on their server, and everyone would wanna have access to it necessarily, and it just, they would have to have a password to get into it.
Something good system.
It's the way everything's going.
And a lot of the courthouses across the state have very limited access, many, many.
I have a question, too. Do the fobs have numbers, so if you lost one, you could make it inactive?
Yep. Yeah, if you, in the software, you would label each fob that you give out to each individual, so if it was Mark lost his, you could just go on to him and give it mark.
Because that's, sometimes we have people losing keys.
Right.
And after we tell them where they have to pay for them, it doesn't happen.
What does it cost to replace a fob?
I think the fob is like five twenty-five right now, and my double P's, you guys are using our fifteen dollars.
Cheaper?
We don't have that on, we just need to make a decision on that today, Liz.
It's under, under.
It's under your business.
Under our business.
Discussion on key fob security.
No, we're good.
I got it. I'll entertain a motion to.
I won't have a motion.
You recommend. Accept a bid for key fobs and security for the people. Is there a second for discussion?
I'll start.
This is, wait, you wanna go then, Roger, do you run, you think it's, you think it's, you're happy with the fact that we'll be able to unlock it for those bigger events and everything?
Yeah.
You're confident we can make this work, and
Yeah.
We'll get yelled at a few times.
Sounds like we do anything with the door.
You're not, you're not gonna please everybody, just face that fact. They'll all be used to it. Yeah.
I know the people that do it, you know, they can have their arms full of stuff, and they can just play their fob and get in, they don't have to.
We like our fobs at the sheriff's office, that would be.
That's nice.
That's good to know.
And we can lock out somebody, like the sheriff's department, we don't give access to the police department. That's my private, you know what I mean? So you can lock them out from wherever you wanna lock them out, they can only get in on one door, an employee, that's all they get in on. So, it's a very good security.
Any other discussion?
Guys are pretty quiet, better vocal.
Brown?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Leipon?
Hi.
Burton's? Haysler?
Hi.
This wasn't a big video, I thought.
We should make signs.
Yeah, we should have, we might even, maybe we should publish it in the newspaper.
Do something.
Actually, Louise will probably give us coverage.
But we, we could take it, we could put a notice in the newspaper, and if there's one of the access.
I'll even type it out.
Should I put some signs up, so people know what's going on? Nobody used to, it couldn't warn, nobody used to have that.
The wife I love, can you make anything like this, like, uh?
His wife does.
Oh, there you go. I'll work this out, I'll give her a call. I'll give her a call, Mar.
Their signs are really nice.
Instead of my paper signs all over all the windows, we'll have like neat ones, that look good. Six on there, yep. Just like a window claim, yep.
Yeah. Hey, when you wash the window, it just washes back.
Okay. Surface part of the auction sale. I'll go over your rules of regulation, if everybody's ready for the auction. Basically, if you bid on an item, you're the only ones that can bid on that. If somebody hasn't bid on the item at all, we'll say it's open. And we want a dollar payment, we don't want cents. And tomorrow morning, you come in with your funds, you get a receipt, and you pick up the items you paid for. But you have to have a receipt before you can pack your items, and after nine, please. So we can get time to write the receipts. Okay? Everybody clear? Any questions?
I have Catherine.
And I'm just gonna tell you what the item is, and go from there.
Item number one is a standing floor fan. Floor fan?
Yep.
Um, the high bidder on that is Travis Zahn at five dollars. We also have Connie Kleenex, Elizabeth Fisher, Mark Olson, Louise Olson, and Gene Sambergard. If you may raise that bid a little five of a degree.
I'll go six.
Okay? A bid of six dollars for the standing floor fan, and they're neither bid, just a chair, it's lit. Wait, once, twice, it's a gold. And next one, so Louise wants it for six, so we use it for six. The next one is another standing floor fan.
I'm not gonna stand here and try and talk over you, sorry. Next is a standing floor fan for five dollars, high bid, Travis Zahn. Mark Olson, Elizabeth Fisher, and Connie Kleenex have also bid. Anybody wanna raise the bid for five dollars?
I'll go six.
Any other bids? Sold for six dollars. And the third standing floor fan is, it has a bid of ten dollars on it from Sherry Hatton. Lisa Decept, Jean Samardar, Mark Olson, Elizabeth Fisher, Travis Zahn, and Connie Kleenex.
Am I saying your name yet, close?
This week has been bitched, so it's okay. Anybody not raising that ten dollar bid on the standing floor fan? Going once, twice, sold Sherry Hatton for ten dollars. And I have an eight-foot countertop, Kevin Fieldson five dollars, Roger Beaver twelve fifty-five. Kevin, you going up?
Yeah, I'll say thirteen.
Okay. Roger?
Is that number four?
Yes, that's number four.
On the on there?
Nope.
What is your bid on that?
Thirteen dollars.
Fifteen. Sold.
Fifteen dollars, sold to Roger Beaver. The next one is a Toshiba copier. Roger Beaver has the high bid for five dollars.
That's done, right?
Yep.
Sold. Sharp copier Roger Beaver, five dollars, sold. The three drawer file cabinet, Roger Beaver has a high bid of ten fifty-five. Uh, Chad Anan, five dollars, and Elizabeth Fisher, one dollar. Either of you like to raise your bid? Sold to Roger Beaver for ten fifty-five. Five brook file cabinet, Roger Beaver twelve fifty-five. Jean Samardar, Louise Olson, Chad Anan, and Kristen Nelson each have bids in, would you like to raise the bid from twelve fifty-five?
Fifteen.
Fifteen from Jean?
I'll go twenty.
Twenty from Kristen. Anybody else?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five for.
He really wants it, he can have it.
Twenty-five dollars, sold.
He'd have a hard bargain.
And then, uh, we have a three-dollar, three drawer file cabinet, Roger Beaver for ten fifty-five, and another one for ten fifty-five. And we, number eleven, we have a Walmart metal cabinet, we have three tie bids, Roger Beaver, Jean Samardar, and Mark Olson for five dollars. Kevin Fieldson is also in bidding for two. Anybody gonna raise that?
Six.
Six from Kevin.
Eight.
Eight from Jean.
Ten.
Ten from Kevin. Done? Ten dollars to Kevin Fieldson. Mark Olson, you won a metal bookcase for ten dollars. There's a wooden desk, Chad Anan and Mark Olson are tied at twenty dollars. Anybody wanna raise the bid?
Twenty-five. Sold it.
Sold to Chad Anan for twenty-five. Office desk and workstation, Sherry Hatton gets that for forty-five dollars. Two drawer cabinet, uh, Sherry Hatton is the high bidder on that for eight dollars. Roger Beaver and Connie Kleenex, you may raise it if you'd like. Oh?
I'll go nine.
Nine for Connie. Sherry's not here, you got it.
Okay.
An antique fan, Lisa Decept has a bid in of twenty-five dollars. Travis Zahn, Sherry Hatton, Mark Olson, Kevin Fieldson, Jean Samardar, Roger Beaver, and Jeff Kenner may also bid. Lisa Decept, twenty-five dollars. And we have a Sharp microwave without any bids on it, would anyone like to bid on a Sharp microwave? Going once. One dollar. There you go. Anyone else? Sold. To Mark Olson for a dollar. And we have a six-foot table, Mark Olson is the high bidder on that for ten dollars, Travis Zahn five, Roger Beaver seven fifty-five. Roger and Travis can raise that bid from ten dollars if you choose.
Well, let's do fifteen.
Fifteen? Mark? Sold to Roger Beaver for fifteen. A Panasonic TV with Walmart, Lisa Decept and Mark Olson. Mark Olson has the high bid at six dollars. Cheers, Mark. Along with an Orion TV with a Walmart for six dollars, and another Orion TV bid for six dollars. And an Emerson TV with Walmart for six dollars. Wow. Then we've got a humidifier, I've got Louise Olson and Elizabeth Fisher tied for a dollar.
Russell.
Two dollars.
You can have it.
Okay.
That was pretty easy.
Yeah.
And then I've got Roger Beaver, who has won a six-foot table for five dollars. Now we're gonna go to folding chairs. High bid is three dollars for a set of ten, number twenty-five. Connie, Mark Olson, Kevin Fieldson.
Tied, you said?
Mark and Kevin are tied at three.
Four.
Five.
Six.
Have it.
Sold for six dollars, Kevin. And again, high bid three dollars. Mark, Kevin, Connie Kleenex, and the dollar bid, you're welcome to go up.
I'll go four.
Anybody else?
Five.
Sold Kevin for five dollars. There's another set of ten. Oh, this one's got Elizabeth Fisher, Mark Olson, and Connie Kleenex. Elizabeth is at five dollars. Anybody wanna raise that? Sold Elizabeth. Gotta be careful now, you're retiring now. Another set of folding chairs, Kevin, Mark, and Connie Kleenex, three dollars is the high bid. Four. Anybody else? Sold to Connie for four dollars. Another set of folding chairs, three dollars, Mark Olson, Connie Kleenex, you can also bid.
Fine connect.
I'll do it then.
Mark gets them.
Mark can count those.
Mark got them, three bucks. And another set, Connie and Mark, three bucks.
Mark, what are you gonna do with them?
I don't know yet. Have a concert.
I'll go four. You gonna top that, Mark?
I got top.
Okay. Sold to Connie Kleenex Connect for four dollars. And another set, Mark and Connie, three dollars is the high bid. You don't need anymore, okay, and Mark Olson, you give him for three. Another set, Mark Olson, Elizabeth Fisher. Three dollars is the high bid.
Mark gets them.
Mark gets them, okay. Now we move on to a metal cabinet, number thirty-three. High bid on that is Bill Hodes for twenty dollars, Kevin Fieldson three, Jean Samardar five, and Roger Beaver five. Would any of you gentlemen like to raise that ten dollar bid?
Twenty-two.
Roger? Okay, Kevin got it for twenty-two. And we've got an O-K-I printer to Jean Samardar for two dollars. And we've got a Lexmark, Lexmark fax machine. Any bidders on that? Open for bids.
Works good. In my office.
Any bidders? Nope. Four-foot wood table, any bidders?
I'll go a buck.
Got Mark Olson for one dollar, or anybody else want a four-foot wooden table? Sold to Mark Olson. Then I got a Dell laptop routers, CNET switch, and a USB video writer. No bids on that. Anybody interested? Hard drive stand, no bidders on that. Anybody interested? Another four-foot table with no bidders. Interest? Mark Olson has a dollar on a four-foot table, anybody else? Sold. Six-foot table, Travis Zahn, five dollars. Samsung computer monitor, Travis Zahn, five dollars. Another Samsung computer monitor with no bidders. And another one with no bidders.
I'll give you a dollar, please.
Okay.
Anybody else on this?
There's a, there's a third one.
Oh, I just need to.
Okay. Anybody else wanna bid on those? Sold to Elizabeth Fisher for two of them at a dollar each. Anybody wanna bid on the third one? And I got a three-foot table, Mark Olson, eight dollars, Jean Samardar five, and Connie Kleenex one. Anybody else?
What's high, eight?
Eight.
It's ten.
Ten? It's a three-foot table.
With the yellow top.
Okay? Anybody else? Sold to Jean. Then I got a computer hard drive, no bidders. I've got one, two, three, four, five of them. Five computer hard drives. No bidders. Anybody wanna bid a dollar on them? Then I got an office chair, number fifty-one, no bidders. Does anybody want an office chair?
Mark, you need to check yourself.
I got a lot of chairs, thank you.
And I got another one.
My wife was sure she'd be buying it, crazy.
Yeah, she's retired, she's got a lot of time to sell.
We have people on here. Man, people have a home. Nice nail.
Yep. Metal cabinet with wheels. Jackie Fuller is the high bidder for six dollars, I have Jean Samardar, Elizabeth Fisher, Travis Zahn, and Connie Kleenex. All able to bid over that six if they'd like.
Eight.
Got eight dollars from Jean? Okay, anybody else? It's all yours, Jean. Okay, then I got a couple items out at the highway department, I got a John near three axle trailer. Mark Olson has bid three hundred dollars on it, is there anybody else interested? Roger Beaver and Kevin Fieldson, you are allowed to bid these up.
All four? All four, it's a three axle. But you get all four, man?
You can't bid.
All four.
You can't bid.
You can't bid.
No.
What are they, like five thousand pound axles?
Just Kevin, Roger.
They're trailer house axles. Plus the tighter stick above the deck. Oh, really?
Sold to Mark Olson for three hundred dollars.
Borrow, gonna borrow.
And then there's a large building water cooler tower that they just took off the roof for forty dollars, and Jeff Kenner is allowed to bid on that for forty bucks. Done.
I'll just keep that out of my budget.
Can we have a motion to accept the bid? Can we have a second, please? All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A poll is same sign? Most carries. Elizabeth Black, you're up, discussion on omitted properties.
Good evening.
Good evening, thanks for your patience.
I am here, we have, um, finished all of our measuring, listing, and sketching of the farm residency exemption. And we'll be finalizing the values, um, this next week. At which point, uh, the auditor's office will send out letters notifying the individuals that it affected, um, what we came up with. And then they'll have a fifteen-day timeframe to come in and discuss it. Uh, first, I'd just like to show you, um, if you look from the map above you, um, the green are everything that we exempted. And the red are, will now be added to the tax rolls. I have to move by, by C look. Moving to, if I, over here. Okay, so as you can see that, those are all, became exempt. In the end, five hundred and sixty-two properties were affected by the farm residence exemption and the farmer structures, farm building exemption. Uh, we ended up having four hundred and forty-seven properties that received an exempt status in the county. Uh, of those, two hundred and thirty-eight were occupied residences. And in the end, a hundred and fifteen residences will be added. This, I'm gonna show you where everything lies that we will be adding. So it's very scattered throughout the county. So what, the biggest decision today, um, for the commission is which captures we will be adding. For when the project began, at that time it was discussed that we would be adding two thousand and fifteen. And now we're moving into two thousand and sixteen. Those statements will be coming out in December. So it would be up to you to vote if we will, um, add both years or go with into the future, or go with just the two thousand and sixteen that's coming out.
As we discussed in our committee, we pretty much agree that we just go with two sixteen, right?
Um, as far as our office, I know that all of you are very informed, and this has been going on for a year, and I know that you can make a good decision on that. Um, we are able either way to do whatever work is needed. I know that it does entail a lot more additional work for Elizabeth's office and Lisa's office if we added the fifteen here. So I, I just think it's a discussion between you that would probably finalize that.
So of those a hundred and fifteen that are no longer exempt, then none of them have been taxed previously then? So we added, everyone would be added at the same time then?
Correct. Of those. Except for those households who put themselves on the tax rolls.
Yes.
Yes. In two thousand and fifteen. In two thousand and fifteen, they came in and put themselves on the tax rolls.
I just wanna make sure that we're, there's no confusion that everyone is being treated equally and fairly and the same. So if you didn't add yourself and you haven't been exempted previously, or you have been exempted previously and now you have to align it, everyone would be added as at the same date, so no one will pay more years than somebody else. And that's the way, at least in my opinion, the agency handles them.
And I was pretty thoughtful about as well, that we weren't gonna start with one township and then do another one another year, and another one another year. You either did them all or you did not. And that was kind of where that firestorm came from, I guess.
How much work does it add for the auditor's office and treasurer's office, do we allow that to happen in two thousand and fifteen, just out of curiosity?
I wouldn't know until we started.
It would be something.
It would be, yes.
It wouldn't be as clean as just doing two thousand and sixteen.
Right, because two thousand and sixteen, we aren't finished putting on the values yet, and then figuring the nails or any of that stuff yet.
And we are in two thousand and sixteen, and we just have to work on some. I'll make the motion, we add them for the two thousand and sixteen tax year report forward.
Aye.
Any other discussion?
About the people who did vote for themselves, is it fair to that?
Yeah, they made the choice to go in and add themselves.
And decided themselves. I guess I figure it's fair.
I mean, I suppose people that, that were, you'd have to make the assumption that most people were probably unaware, or the ones that weren't aware came in in two thousand and fifteen and added them. or the ones that weren't aware came in twenty fifteen and added themselves. If somebody got the letter and then became aware, were there anybody that got the letter, became aware, and then self-added themselves at that point?
No, we have not added anyone since that first initial.
So I mean, I guess if there's a few people that did that and were unhappy with it, we could deal with it on a case-by-case basis, I think.
Well, fifteen, the county board is already buying. If you wanted to add fifteen, you should have started a lot earlier.
Yeah, it would have been, like I said.
A lot, well, for years, yeah.
Well, that's what I said, you're going to add fifteen, what, you're going to go back thirty years? That's, I mean, what, you want to break somebody?
I don't think it's fair to get somebody twice.
And I don't either, I agree with that.
I just don't believe that.
I agree, I agree with that a hundred percent, that we don't think it's fair to go back and penalize people for years that we weren't enforcing.
Might as well, should have done fifteen budget, or fifteen, you know, assets there. I mean, we got five dollars, so I don't see any reason for it to end up.
So it's a clean break, a clean start, from all of your board and staff.
One thing I'd like to add, thank Beth for all the hard work and her staff, who made a very, very good job. So you got to be commended for that. This has been quite an underdating, and I think they were apprehensive when they started. I think they all felt their problem maybe some blowback, I guess, in front of whatever view, but she confided in me, and it went quite well.
Right, I actually was thinking, I'd like to just commend the residents of the community, because it affected so many. Whether they ended up being exempt, but had to do new paperwork and go through many things. They all treated us with respect, and were kind, and the township boards, and the commission. Everyone treated us very well, through a lot of it.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion in a second on the floor to place omitted properties, tax-exempt properties on the two thousand and sixteen tax rolls.
I'm looking at the roll call.
Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Highsland?
Aye. And all she carries. And Kevin, I know it's been a long day, but...
I got a miracle.
Thank you, Beth.
Thanks again, Beth.
Want to start with the budget, or?
Wherever you want.
Okay, I'll start with the budget. My pages aren't numbered, so we'll have to kind of work together.
Twenty-three, it's blacked out.
Okay, the blocktop fund. Under the construction, I have listed repairing the soft spots on gravel FAS routes. Overlay patches again next year. Construction engineering for the Webster Road, coming out of Webster, that AK, we call it. And there's one point four, one million four hundred and forty-four thousand for construction on R C A K, but that is hospital eleven seventy-six months. So that's in that total figure there. It's, you know, paid for, but...
Twenty-three here.
Twenty-three.
How much of that two point three million that is actually locally assessed by?
All of it, the one point four.
All of the one point four.
The nine hundred thousand.
In that, in that blocktop fund, I have that water township bridge, and I budgeted four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for that.
You put one seventy in, so we didn't keep that in?
Four hundred and seventy.
Oh, four seventy, that's in for the bridge?
Yep. So that's where that would be, is in that budget, or in that.
So that's included in that eight sixty then?
So in my, I'd say that in case if we want to cut that, that's where it is.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was asking where it was going to fall in, so we would know where that project is, but...
Okay, any questions? Your next one is that county road?
Yep.
Okay, we have the salaries there for just the office personnel. And again, we just use Tommy's recommendations. Fixed charges are fifty thousand. Capital outlay for purchasing new equipment, seventy-five thousand. Construction, we have Ramsey County Cavalier County Line Graveling, which I figured sixty thousand. Graveling eight D, which is the gravel road east of Laton. These are all in the five-year road plan. Graveling seven A, which is west of Rocket, three miles, or, oh, that's about nine miles of road. And seven C, which is east of Rocket, which is three miles. All of those projects, and I take only two west, south of Penn. All those come off the five-year road plan. And also in there, I have figured for miscellaneous road projects, which we always have a few every year, that's two hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's the miscellaneous items for my item.
So that can be spent for any project then?
Yep.
So if we got some, we got some spots, or we get a bridge that comes up, we need some culvert work or something?
Yep, exactly. We always have, one thing that may be coming up is the Cavalier Ramsey County Line. If we decide to pay a hundred percent of that, that would be another sixty thousand. And I didn't budget for it. We'll talk about that later, but that's not in there yet, that sixty thousand. So that should come out of that miscellaneous.
Do you have any specific ideas of what you're looking for in the new equipment, or under that seventy-five thousand?
Uh, new pickup again, for sure. Not really. And that wouldn't take all of that.
Yeah.
Can I help if he does?
Any other questions? County road equipment, we never have, had anything there for years. Is that the next page?
Yep.
County bridge, is that the next page? Okay. I have a hundred and ninety thousand there, and we're going to have some carryover there, so that won't be all mills, but... I figured equipment rental at thirty thousand dollars, and then culverts for resale. The culverts that we buy throughout the year and then resell, a hundred and sixty thousand. That's all that's in there. Since we had a bridge that came up, and we needed to buy culverts, I think we could still use that a hundred and sixty, it would be enough there for that.
How many dollars of culverts do we sell a year?
Well, probably a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's crazy, because there's just a lot. So I was always wondering where they were going.
Yeah, I would say five percent of them we use ourselves.
Rest of them, rest of them are sold. They're probably the only people that know that you're selling culvert.
We get such a good deal when we get the market clear. Any questions on that budget? Okay, the next page is highway tax, right? That's all the wages for all the workers. Again, that's Tommy's recommendations. It does include some overtime pay, I think thirty, got thirty thousand for seasonal employees and overtime. And that's one item we never use, at the end of the year, we never use at all. Unemployment, like if we have to pay benefits to somebody that's on unemployment, that also comes out of that top, that salary item. And there's five thousand figured for that. Fixed charges, two hundred thousand. And there's the unemployment there on that line. So that's not in that top line. Insurance, forty-eight thousand five hundred. That was up a little bit. By the end of the year, we're probably going to spend all of what we budgeted for last year, so I just raised a little. Travel, I lowered just a little bit. Utilities, I don't know how utilities are going to end up with that blue building. That actually costs as much to eat as our big shed, why, I don't know, but... Anyway, that, we did lower that a little bit, but we'll see how that turns out.
Hey, eat it.
And do, yep, yep. And we turned the air conditioner off, and a lot of the lights and electricity bill sings our shop. It blows my mind. But I will say one thing, the search and rescue have those vet suits that they run vans through all the time, constantly, to dry them out, to keep them dry, so... You wouldn't take a little twelve, or a little van and cut, run that much electricity, but I think that's what it is.
Well, it's probably an agent, so. They'll be in on, they'll...
They'll bet on buildings.
Right, so that'll reduce that some. So I did drop that down just a little. Office supplies, I cut the same. Gas, oil, and fuel, I'm predicting that the fuel prices will go down compared to this year.
Eighty-two optimistic?
I hope not.
Well, except for if we can get on this year's project, so.
Fifty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Fifty-four, last year.
Anyway, I lowered that, a hundred and twenty thousand. Supplies and material, lowered just a little bit, a hundred and sixty-one. Repairs and maintenance, with all the newer equipment we're getting, the repairs are down, so that's down a little bit. Capital outlay, I didn't do any in this budget, it all was in that seventy-five thousand, it was a little bit on that.
Yeah, I put the money for the head and the shop in on this year?
Uh, let me see, yes, it was. Yep. Yeah, great. Construction, I never put anything in for that, highway tax. House Bill thirteen fifty-eight, that is done. Senate Bill twenty-one oh-three. I think we're going to have a lot spent this year, sixteen, so there won't be anything seventeen, so I left that at zero. And miscellaneous expenses, I put that in as, we're going to need new, our shingles on our shop, our shot, and I figured about twenty thousand to put metal roof up there. So I put that under miscellaneous expenses.
Do you have a question, Matt?
I am, it's just something we can do ourselves, and it's kind of a wave of things to come. Any questions on that? County road program, okay, this is our chip seal program. And this year, we're going to chip seal four D, which goes from Rocket North to six. And eight B, which is the one that just got paved this summer from between three and four. And also that one mile right by Rocket that comes out Highway one. So that's what I figured, sixty-five thousand for the chips that we're actually going to be buying for twenty eighteen. And four hundred and twenty-five for that chip seal project, and fifty thousand for the striping. Adds up to five forty. Any questions there? Flood damages, that's kind of a moving target to be going on this, but I did throw some numbers in there. And these are really, uh, middle levy numbers, but... Got it? Great. So we've only got like one or two projects left in two thousand and nine. Maybe two or three in two thousand and ten, and then a few in eleven. The thirteen, two thousand and thirteen's were small disasters, so... The first disaster in thirteen is just about done. But the bulk of the work is left in the second disaster in thirteen. But this is just what I figure will be paid now, I mean, it's not any county.
And this is all feeable dollars, correct?
Yeah, exactly. Is there any more?
Did you get a chance to check with Sandy, is there going to be any more pole byouts?
She, she's not going to have any. Well, she didn't predict on that, I never know about the flood issues, but she said she didn't have any on the board. All right, any questions on the budget, I guess? No, okay. Hi, general, or the project updates, Ramsey County ten, they got all the gravel done, so that project's finished. Ramsey County nine, paving, T L O, is that, that pretty much finished, except for a little bit of dirt work on the shoulders, Nick?
Yep, and they had started working on the shoulders and broke them over again. So they're on hold until the end of the week, or the, probably next week, to clean up the shoulders on eight down nine.
Okay, seven down eight.
Well, there's one, or two small patches to do on eight.
Oh, I did see those circles on there, yeah. And the shoulders, all are like little rows of gravel they have on the, down in the grass a little way?
Yeah, it's actually, well, most of it's chips from over the years and sod, pretty much, that they peeled up to lay the asphalt in. And they got a little deeper than what they were planning on, and left kind of a massed mole, so...
They're going to pick that up?
They're going to chop it up and spread it out, mulch it, more or less. They're using a mower, and they've broke it twice, done it for projects, but the same issues, so I'm better, better than them.
They're going to mulch it.
Yeah.
Any questions on those two projects? The Edmore shop, they got all the walls up now, that they were working on ordering the tin for inside and outside, either today or tomorrow. And I did receive a letter back from the city end, I guess, so I don't know where we're setting with the super yet. They said they drafted the letter, it's caught in the mail somewhere right now. So any questions on the projects? Okay, Cavalier County is now proposing that we gravel, that the grailing projects that we have planned for next year, and each county pays a hundred percent for their side, so to speak. I have no idea what they have planned on their side, but that's a lot bigger road than ours, so... I had budgeted sixty thousand just for our half of the west side of Hammond. So I guess if we wanted to go along with their proposal, I'd be in favor of it, I don't know, again, I don't know what they're going to be spending on their side, but... Might be something we want to keep an eye on.
They want to do this next year?
We want to do ours next year, I don't know when they're doing ours.
When's the last time we gravel?
Six years, six years, I don't know, six, it's coming around on our six-year plan. And we, for whatever reason, I don't know if they got feeable money or whatever, but I don't remember helping them out in the last ten years on their side. And we, for whatever reason, I don't know if they got field money or whatever, but I don't remember helping them out in the last ten years on their side.
So do we have an, is there an agreement we have with them?
There is.
Yeah.
And I did bring a copy of that. I'll just skip down to the gravel part. All major road projects such as graveling, colored installation, bridge repair, and regalls, flood repairs, complete road rebuilding, or any other projects help be presented and approved by both commissions. Costs of these large products shall be shared equally between Ramsey County and Cavalier County. And this was, uh, two thousand four. Plain sign. So, I mean, it's up to you guys, but.
So how exactly does that work then? We basically control that portion west of Hampden, and then we budget for a gravel it, and then bill them for half?
Yep.
And then they do the same thing on their portion then?
Yep.
How many more miles do they have than us?
We have, they have fifteen, we have twelve, but, but the state highway, on the entire, we'd have fifteen also, but there's two miles of state highway on our side, Highway twenty.
Okay, but we just handle it that way so we make sure that somebody's got oversight on it?
Yes, exactly, we do the signing and, I mean, and so.
Yeah, just make sure it doesn't fall through the crack statement.
Yep.
Yeah. But they haven't told you exactly what their plan is for?
Well, they, what they did tell me is they were gonna put a three-inch overlay, or a three-inch lift on there, and it was four hundred thousand dollars. Well, they didn't have the money for that, so now they're thinking of backing it down to, you know, five hundred yards from mile, which we were planning on the other side, five hundred yards from mile. And I don't know if that's been committed to or yet, yet or not, but that's what they're talking about now.
Kevin, do you need a motion to do this?
I think so, because it's going against our agreement.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept Cavalier's proposal to, that they do the, we do the last maybe at ease.
I'll second the discussion.
And just for discussion, I think I can cover the other sixty thousand, just, it's, that's a question, I mean.
Yeah, assuming if they do the same thing that we're planning, then it's gonna be probably, if they have fifteen, we got twelve, it's gonna be more than the sixty we've got budgeted then. So we're gonna have to come up with, and you don't have that in your budget right now?
The sixty or what they're doing?
What they're doing.
No, I don't.
No.
Cause they never, I mean, they, they haven't even committed themselves, put it that way.
So, so they dumped the four hundred thousand dollar project, and now they're gonna come up with another one? But they haven't decided just what that is yet?
Right, exactly.
And then we have to pay for half of it, whatever it is?
According to the agreement, but now they're proposing that everybody pay for their own, great.
Well, that'd be pretty nice for us, cause we got twelve miles and I got fifteen, right?
Yeah, and they got that.
I mean, just bacon.
They got that, uh, hog farm over there too, so I don't know if the hog farm's gonna help them, I don't know none of that.
Twelve miles, it's fine, it's all right till next year? That's what is on the plan, right?
Yeah.
Twelve mile next year.
Till seventeen, yeah, it is.
It's fine.
Yeah.
So they wanna draft a new agreement then? Essentially, they're, they're, but they want us, so, under the motion that we have on the table, we're gonna cover our portion of the twelve miles a hundred percent, they're not gonna pay anything then?
Right.
So we're not abiding to the agreement we currently have?
Right.
Well, then we won't pay a bill, we may send it to us here.
Right, when they grab on their side, we won't give a bill.
Who does wait till next year to do that? Like, we have a road plan for that.
Well, at least we have to have a budget for it.
We have to have a budget.
Yeah.
That's, that's the, that's the way to do it.
Yeah.
We do have, you did budget.
I budgeted half.
Yeah, you budgeted for half then.
But you did, but you can come up with the other half.
I can come up with the other half, yeah.
Okay.
I guess I'm only thinking from the aspect of, 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 you know, in this situation, maybe it's positive for us that we have less and it's probably less traveled, but then what happens when the difficulty occurs when the other county decides they don't wanna keep up their fifteen miles? Then we've got no, we've got no stick to kinda, or any carrot, to kinda make, make sure that they keep their road up.
You remember though, cause that kind of their residence or anything.
Yeah, I know, I realize, hopefully they're, I, I, I assume they'll probably be just fine.
Their county commissioners, just like us, they can, they can agree to that or something.
So we have motion in the second on the floor to accept during the whole twelve miles, we're paying for it a hundred percent ourselves?
Well, it's, uh, with the stipulation that they, that we have to rework the agreement, because what happens if they come back and, like you said, we won't pay the bill if they come with the other fifteen miles, but.
We'll just have to make a note back to this, uh, agenda, because that's the recommendation.
That's the recommendation.
It was their proposal.
I would say just make sure that they rework, they rework the agreement to get it in front of us, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, that is the motion, that is their proposal.
Yeah, agreeing to their proposal, switching to the orange, that's what it is.
Any other discussion? We will call now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right.
Okay, we got quotes from the local dealers on a three-quarter ton pickup, the, uh, state bid was twenty-seven thousand. This is for a three-quarter ton long box crew cab. State bid was twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-six. Uh, marketplace dwellers is twenty-seven thousand eight hundred. Toyota was thirty-five thousand five hundred. Lake Chevy didn't bid because they were, they couldn't even get close, was the response I got. And Chrysler Center doesn't offer a three-quarter ton with a long box and crew cab, so they didn't bid either.
What kind of bid was the state bid?
Three-quarter ton long box crew cab.
What, what brand though?
Ford, yeah, Ford.
Only motion to accept the state bid.
Um, okay.
Yeah, the, the local bids, uh, I guess a hundred and fifty dollars more, I mean. It would be fine with me if we wanted a local bid, because just we wouldn't have to, we'd have to go to farble.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna, before you, I can't.
I'll second that.
Okay, did you wanna, you wanna switch it to the local?
Local bid, yeah.
And you're gonna second that, okay.
You're gonna take that out of sixteen money?
Yes.
And, um, you'll save that hundred and forty-four dollars by not having to go to Bizmart and pick it up, correct?
Yep, exactly, it's farble, but yes.
Or farble to pick it up, so save that many dollars if you have.
The state bid always keeps some money. They're gonna clean their shoes, they wanna hit in the back.
Road tires and yeah? Oh, the road tires, I can guarantee that I have to invest in some oil in my pants.
Okay, so we have a motion in the second on the floor to accept marketplace modern bid for twenty-seven thousand eight hundred on the three-three-ten long box. Local, please.
Brown. Martins. Olson.
Aye.
Lightfun.
Aye.
Highsler.
Aye.
All right, mower tractors, this is more just for bringing back up to speed, we, we agreed a while back to, uh, rent through John Deere. And we were too late to get them ordered, they said they couldn't get them ordered in February, in order to get them here by September. So we were out there, but, um, Caterpillar has told that they'll rent for thirty dollars an hour, which actually turns out to be a better deal for us, because we don't put that many hours. With the John Deere, we had to pay for X amount of hours, and we didn't use those hours, so. Now, just a heads up, if you see yellow tractors out there roaming the ditches, you don't know why, instead of green ones. It's actually a better deal for us, but I just wanted to give you a heads up in case somebody asks you guys, why are they yellow instead of green?
Do they do the same work, that's the question.
Okay, and Keith Kurtz from Lake Plummer sent up the OSB board, uh, for the Edmore shop, has gone up in price since May, when we ordered the bid. And he wants us to pay an additional two hundred and fifty-eight dollars ninety-four cents for the cheating. Total bid was thirty-eight thousand eight hundred, and I told him that we weren't gonna pay it, but I told him I would bring it before the commission.
You got the bid. You have a thirty-eight thousand dollar job, you should be able to handle two hundred.
Two hundred and fifty dollars?
For two hundred and fifty dollars?
You told us, that's a good time.
Well, not only that.
I'm not running for election, touch him, all right?
Well, not only that, but we ordered him the bid, even though it was not our bid.
Okay. Next one, if we need, we need to buy the filters and oil to service the three John Deere motors, it's just something we have to do in the group.
Second. Any discussion, that's for all three of them, right?
Yep.
Are you, are you local?
I am, yes.
Local.
Olson.
Aye.
Lightfun.
Aye.
Martins. Brown. Highsler.
Aye.
Okay, and then, in October, when it's during the NACO convention, we meet with, um, secondary loans, eleven o'clock, um, October eleven at nine twenty. And. Along with that, we, they sent this, uh, excuse me, miss.
I put a copy on everybody's desk, so if you got it, make sure you take it to Bizmart with you.
Oh.
That's our county program shooter. The first project listed there is, uh, a three mile on Ramsey County one, they're out here by Lakewood in that area. So that's a project, uh, programmed for twenty eighteen. And the bridge that's on here. And that's the, uh, Morris Township Bridge. And I'm not sure how we're gonna pursue that, but I think for now, we can just leave it on there, it's scheduled for twenty nineteen, so whatever we decide to do with it next year, we can scratch it, or pursue it, or.
That's one, that's what you have budgeted for.
Yep, yep.
We have a second bridge that we're looking at, that we can put on there, if we, so we have sec- something secondary listed?
Not, yes, we are.
We'll learn to yearly allocation.
I know.
We'll learn, uh, if yearly, daily you have the money for, you have to.
Yeah, I mean, it says nineteen, so I think we've got a little bit of time.
But if you don't, it's knee-based, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it's, it's all knee-based off of the bridge and all that, yeah, so you have to have the, 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 going up, grading and all that.
Low rating and school bus route and mail route.
Long detour.
So I really don't see anybody making any change on this, on these programs. So I guess we just need a motion to have the chairman sign it.
Blue group.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign?
A couple other things, um, uh, NEPC wants to put, uh, more fiber wire line north of Penn. One, one and a half miles, and they fill out a permit. We just granted them a permit south of Penn, but this, this is a new permit for the north of Penn, they're gonna be in our ditch, and they're gonna go underneath our road once, and they're gonna bore it when they go underneath the road. So, I guess I don't see any problems with this, oh, I just got it today, but I didn't look at it real good.
That's part of the same project that we approved the fourth board's already, I'll leave it approved.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And then just another heads up, uh, reduction, our hospital eleven seventy-six, because of the legislative people meeting, a percentage reduction, I don't even know what we're doing. Yeah, total of six point five five, anyway, that more of our, uh, house bill money, a hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars, just for heads up.
And we still got, that was point four four million then, that you were having your budget then?
Yep, there's two point zero zero four, so some of the projects we have going now, these.
Okay. So we might come up a little bit better after this year.
Yeah.
Especially some on Ramsey nine, maybe.
Probably heads up for what's coming, though.
Yeah, right, okay. And final thing I have, I finally got a roster list for all the townships, who, who they wanna put on the permanent road committee, uh, I did make copies of this, if anybody's interested in getting one. I haven't set up a date yet, but I thought I would see when. My, Mark, everybody else is available. So this is a, that new road committee we just set up for six townships, and who they appointed for members. But we need to set a date for a meeting now. And I guess I could just visit with Mark and Marina, if you wanna go that route, or we can do it today.
One month early morning and one month after three thirty.
Yeah, but the last one's gonna work, but, yep.
Tom, did you maybe just, you just tell me basically when and where, and I'll be there.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Hey, that's all I have.
Thank you, Kevin. We'll finish the rest of our unfinished business, we'll move on to new business. Need to transfer. We need to move, new business, we'll, we need to prove a letter of transfer.
Move it through, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Then we need to make an appointment to Ramsey County Realization and Annexation Board.
Do you have names?
You got any names?
Um, I have a suggestion, um, with my upcoming retirement, I wouldn't be willing to sit on that board.
How did I guess that? So move, second.
Okay.
Can't miss that chance.
That's right.
Shot me.
I don't mind being on that one, I thought it was interesting.
Sounds good.
Are you going south or north?
I am, but.
Yeah, you fly down for that.
It usually happens in the summer. And I'm here.
Okay, so, who is off of it?
Nobody.
Um, Laverne Blake.
Passed away.
Passed away, okay. All right, so we'll have Steve update that. We have to vote? Uh, all those in favor of appointing Elizabeth Fisher to the Ramsey County Reorganization with the Ex- Annexation Board? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We got some bills paid, crop production services, J and J spraying.
Motion approved.
Oh, wait, there's a lot more.
Hyze wireless, and Grand Forks County.
Antera America, that's for the current group project in Tennessee, Jackson.
You got all those?
Some are in your package, some are in your desk.
Yeah, okay.
We got the Divinum pension bill, forty-nine fifty-six, Hyze wireless, three thousand forty-one. Confidence plan, twenty-nine ten. Roof.
Move it through.
Aye.
All right.
We're all good with it?
It's fine.
And, local, please.
Martins. Lightfun.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Brown. Highsler.
Aye. Motion carries. Letter from the Central Friends Humane Society. They're requesting five hundred and twenty-five dollars from Ramsey County to support the basic care of the animals housed in our facility during their five-day stay hold. This amount is figured by the seven animals that have entered our shelter from Ramsey County in two thousand sixteen and paying a fifteen-dollar day fee. This fee covers staff pay, vaccinations, and basic care for the animal.